In addition to the participants. All right, so I believe Deb has our flag. So we'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. Oh, sorry, it's not even out yet.
Deborah had to bail out because her image froze, so I had to move on the fly, Chair Adams. I apologize for the delay.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, can we please have the roll call by the town clerk?
I will do that as well. Deb's trying to load back on, so I'm gonna...
Okay, I thought I just wasn't seeing her picture, but she's not even here.
She'll be joining us in a moment, hopefully. Councilor Deveraux?
Here.
Councilor Gabrielson?
Here.
Councilor Garvin?
Here.
Councilor Caitlin Jordan?
Here.
Councilor Penny Jordan?
Here.
Councilor Christopher Straw?
Here.
And Chair Valerie Adams?
Here. Thank you.
Yes, you're totally welcome.
Okay, so we now have an opportunity for citizens to raise items not on the agenda. If there's anyone in attendance this evening of our now 14 attendees who'd like to raise an item not on the agenda, this is your opportunity. You have about three minutes per person, and we ask that you please identify yourself by name and address for the record. And you may participate by using the Raise Hand function of Zoom meeting. Seeing no one, we'll move right along to our first item. Item 102-2020, Recommendation from the Energy Committee relating to a landfill solar project. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? I see one hand. Again, you can comment by using the Raise Hand feature. Please do identify yourself by name and address.
Madam Chair, if not meaning to interrupt, do you want to do the workshop portion first and then do the council meeting after?
Oh.
Other items regarding the short-term rental ordinance and the ordinance committee recommendations that you may want to work on before you bring it back to the council for action?
Right, I guess, yeah.
I apologize for the confusion there.
No, that probably makes sense. I guess I was kind of seeing these as sort of merged together, that we would workshop when we reached the items, but it probably makes sense to workshop and then dive in. I'm gonna blame that, blame it on heat.
I'll take the blame. You can take the credit, Madam Chair.
Okay. So we will jump into the workshop. And do we have a workshop agenda? There it is.
Yes.
Let up. Thought I had seen that. Okay. So the short-term rental ordinance. We can begin with that one. I don't know. When we discussed this at the last meeting, there seemed to be a general consensus that people were not ready to send the version we had to the planning board. So I don't know specifically what the issues were that everyone had. Presumably, there were some issues over the Section F sub eight, good neighbor conduct, and the fine. So we'll kind of jump into those. But first, an opportunity for public comment on this item. And I would note, we did receive a number of emails, so those were greatly appreciated from everyone who sent the emails. And I wasn't able to get back to everyone, but I would like people here to know that, you know, we do receive those emails. And I absolutely read all of them and especially appreciated the work that a few of you put into compiling data, which is very helpful for us to do that. So it looks like we have Louise with a hand raised. And talking is permitted, so you can go ahead and unmute yourself. Louise, you may have to unmute yourself on your end. Sometimes it does take a minute, but you do have permission to talk from the host.
There we go.
So you're unmuted now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. It sounds like you may have a bad connection. We can hear you faintly. I don't know if Louise, if you can hear right now. If you maybe want to try calling in on the phone. Is there any way to send a written message to Louise?
I think she may have just jumped out and maybe trying to reattach, Madam Chair.
Okay. So anyone else from the public wishing to comment on this item? Yes, Jessica.
Jessica, you should be good to go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Jessica Sullivan, 441 Mitchell Road. And I just wanted to make a general comment regarding the short-term rentals. I know there've been many meetings. I have not seen all of the minutes yet, but I would like to make a general statement, which is, I certainly am not in favor of what appear to be some kind of more draconian efforts to change the existing ordinance, because I think that the purchase, the pending purchase or recommended purchase of software to track internet rental activity with the internet seems to me would be certainly the way to go. I do have a short-term rental, so let me just put that out there. I do have one. And I think it would be valuable to get data for one or two years from the software before any significant changes are made to the existing ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to comment on this item? Yes, Michael.
I'm Michael Howard, 15 Rocky Point Lane. Regarding data, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Good. I sent to the zoning, to the members of the zoning board an email a couple of weeks ago that was informal data regarding Airbnb rentals. And what I demonstrated was out of 39 rentals in Cape Elizabeth on, this was conducted during June, 40% were showing available dates during June when the moratorium was in effect, the statewide moratorium was in effect. I suspect that a large, that an additional large percentage was unavailable because they were actually rented. In addition, I demonstrated that 33% of the rentals are violating the existing ordinance regarding maximum number of renters per bedroom and the current limit of eight renters per house unless the lot exceeds 30,000 square feet. I did not receive any response associated from, to that message, and that's okay. But I have concerns about the enforcement mechanism going forward. The proposed ordinance indicates that, as I understand it, that people are supposed to be residents of Cape Elizabeth, or at least residents of the state of Maine. Based on my discussions with our code enforcement officer, my understanding is that that is based on the filing of the homestead exemption. And I'm wondering whether or not that's a strong enough mechanism. And in general, I'm wondering what is the appropriate mechanism? I personally don't feel that the existing ordinance is being enforced, and I don't know what the proper enforcement mechanism is. And I'm concerned about what the enforcement mechanism will be going forward. With that said, I'm in support of the existing, of the proposed ordinance as written. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else wishing to comment? Okay. It does not appear so. We do have 23 attendees at this time. No hands raised, so we will... Louise?
Louise made it back.
Louise made it back. Louise, talking is permitted. You can go ahead and unmute yourself.
I'm gonna try again. Can you hear me all right?
We can hear you with connections a little bit. Thank you, but we can hear you better than last time.
Thank you so much. Good evening, town council members, staff and audience. I'm Louise Davis of 51 Old Mill Road. Thank you for this opportunity to comment. I know you're proud of the opportunities made for the public to comment, and you've said you read and listen. And Valerie, I'm very glad to hear that you mentioned that. I feel better. So I've taken the opportunity to write you three letters since January, made a public comment in June, and one tonight. I spent a lot of time researching possible solutions to the issue of problem renters and crafting my thoughts to be clear and reasonable and to the point, and received very little response. And not sure that I've heard. And in my letter of July 13th, I noted that some of your decisions appear arbitrary and lacking data, like the seven-acre number. I'm not sure how you came up with that. And what if a house was abutting to other lots? It seems arbitrary to me without data. It seems clear that you're listening to only a few complainants and not to the many citizens in support of reasonable and responsible STRs. I sent in my letter for the last meeting, and yet what my understanding was, one person stood up and made a comment about the number of STR nights being lower and that a member of the council put on his druthers hat.
Louise, I think we have lost you. If you can hear this, you can make a phone call, and you may have a better connection. And the information is in the agenda. So we will take up your comment if you're able to come back. And I hope that you are. Penny? Talking again.
Hi, good evening. I will pick up where Louise left off. I think the point that she was making was that there was one caller who sounded really angry. And I think that that has been kind of a hallmark of those who, the complaint, the people who are registering their complaints, is that they sound really angry. And I feel like they get a lot of attention for that. And I feel like the, those of us who have been saying over and over again, hey, you know, we've been doing a good job here. We're not hurting anyone. No one's complaining about us. Why is it that, you know, Jeremy heard one person at the last meeting say, wow, you know, I think you should reconsider that number of days. And Jeremy said, yeah, let's have another meeting. Let's have another workshop. Let's talk about changing that number again. You guys did a lot of work on coming up with those numbers. I thought it sounded all really responsible and reasoned and, you know, an arduous process. And then, you know, you get one angry phone call, and you go back to the drawing board with this. And, you know, you've heard me say it before. I just wish that, you know, as was mentioned with the prior caller, that there, if there had been a mechanism for enforcing the original ordinance, which was a really good ordinance, you guys, it was very good, then we wouldn't be here today because the people who complained were complaining about people violating that original ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica has a hand raised for the second time, but I'd like to just make sure there isn't anyone else who hasn't spoken first before coming back to her. Okay, I didn't see anyone, so go ahead, Jessica.
Thank you. Do you need my address again or anything? Okay. I just was interested, listening to Penny Call's comments. As some of you may recall, I was on the ordinance committee when we wrote this original short-term rental ordinance, the first ever for Cape Elizabeth. We do have enforcement procedures in place. It seems, from what I followed, the issue is not being able to track rentals that are existing, that are not registered within, with the town. And I think the proposal for software to track these in order to help code enforcement is excellent. And I think that once that is, you know, in force and we have extra personnel, if needed, to respond to what the internet data tracking tells the town, then this can be dealt with. But there are so many of us that have short-term rentals that have no problems whatsoever, are in full compliance with the existing ordinance. So I really think that gathering important data is the first important step before you make any changes to what I think frankly is a very good ordinance that exists now. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. It does not appear we have any other hands raised among the... Oh, we now do. Penny, did you have a response that you wanted to?
I can wait till, I can wait till everybody has spoken. That's fine. Thanks, Valerie.
Okay. Michael Howard?
I just want to respond to the statement by the, by the previous person who said that there are good enforcement mechanisms in place. My experience is that, that when violations, when I find violations, for example, multiple rentals within a seven-day period, if I contact the code enforcement officer, he says that I need to contact the police. And if I contact the police, then they say that I need to contact the code enforcement officer. So if there is a clear enforcement mechanism in place for the existing code, then it is not clear to me what that is. And that is kind of, that is the only concern I have about the proposed ordinance, which is regarding, regarding state of Maine residency and the filing of a homestead exemption. It just isn't clear to me what the, what the mechanism is gonna be. And honestly, I don't have confidence that there's gonna be any way for that actually to be enforced without individuals calling the Maine Department of Revenue and trying to report someone who's filed a false filing. I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. I don't see any other hands raised. So at this point, we will close the public comment period. And Penny and Jamie, I'm assuming that you two have some responses to those comments. So Penny, go ahead, and then Jamie.
Okay. And I apologize for any noise in the background, but it seems to be a pretty busy town tonight from a silent perspective. I just want to say, and I don't want people to take this as being defensive in any way, but I strongly feel that what I strive to do as the chair of the ordinance committee was to create one extremely engaged and inclusive dialogue around the subject of short-term rentals. And I also want to say that there is nothing arbitrary about what we had put forth. When we talk about the seven acres or greater, we gathered data around the number of lots that would fall within that range and use that as kind of the template for how we might craft that part of the ordinance. When it comes to a budding and adjacent, what we tried to do is listen to the different models that exist around short-term rentals and test them to see if there could be a way to craft them in a way that limited the impact on neighborhoods, neighbors, and the community. When we talk about, was it the people who spoke the loudest that were the ones that had the most input into this ordinance? I can emphatically say no, because we created one of the, I truly believe, one of the most inclusive, to the point where Maureen was going Penny three or four hour meetings, my God. But it was about hearing everybody's voice as we crafted this. And for people who have short-term rentals that are generational, it breaks my heart. It isn't where I wanted the ordinance to end up. But it's where we had to place the ordinance was what is it that we can use as the highest decision-making criteria? And then go from there. And the highest decision-making criteria had to do with primary residents. And I think that you have all read the ordinance and you see how that cascades down through the whole ordinance. So I just want to stress that it was about inclusion. It was about hearing the different models that exist around short-term rentals. It was about coming up with how we have the least amount of impact on neighborhoods. And when you look at the objective of the ordinance, you read that it is about peace and tranquility within neighborhoods and limiting businesses that can impact that. And so I just need to stress that I do not see anything arbitrary about what we did. And I feel that this ordinance puts forth the best solution that we can come up with that will have the least amount of impact on neighborhoods and recognizes the rural aspects of Cape Elizabeth as well. So there's a balance that we tried to strike.
Thanks, Penny. Jamie?
Thanks, Valerie. I just wanted to directly address Mr. Howard's comments first, which have to do with the criteria, the threshold, that somebody, somebody's property to be defined as a primary residence would have to meet the, meet the criteria of being eligible for or having already filed for the main homestead exemption. So that is something that, if demonstrated that they already have filed for it, is a strong proof of primary residency. If somehow somebody has chosen to lie or deceive in trying to attain that qualification, that's a felony under Maine statute. So we felt that that was a very strong, you know, very strong way to ensure that, you know, because of that potential violation, were they to be not effectively presenting their property as eligible, that that would, that would have strong enforcement capabilities. So there were, there were other criteria that were considered for that that were actually deemed, you know, easier to sort of skirt around than that requirement. So I just wanted to specifically respond to that. Generally speaking, just in broad response to some of the collective comments, I echo what Penny said. I take issue with, and I am sort of disappointed that the impression amongst tonight's audience is that only those that have spoken loudest are the ones that are heard. We have worked painstakingly on this over a many number of months with an effort to come up with something that truly, you know, in my opinion, works to thread a needle and create and forge a compromise on a very complex and complicated issue. And, you know, take everybody's input and individual situations into account and try and, you know, try and have those be equally considered in creating the output that's, you know, before us for consideration now. The other thing I wanted to say is that I think understanding that there has been an ordinance in place and that ours was actually one of the first in the area, a lot has changed since that ordinance originally went into effect. And I think it's appropriate for us to be trying to keep up with the times and the changing marketplace as it relates to short-term rentals. People have questioned us about, you know, different data points, and I think raised some very good questions. And for some of the questions that have been posed to us, I'm not aware that we have the data or the information to provide back to them. But some data that we have used and that I've leaned on is that, you know, over the last couple of years, on just one of the rental platforms alone, on Airbnb, rental activity has increased fourfold in just a couple of years. And there's no sign that that is going to decrease or plateau or level off in any way. So this is a burgeoning and expanding marketplace that if we remain complacent about, the activity is surely going to far outpace our ability to regulate it. The other thing that I've been trying to keep in mind as a driving sort of focus and, and sort of balance to strike here is that the work that we've been doing has been, by its design, intended to react to and respond to specific known issues with the current ordinance and complaints that we've received from people within the community about the negative activity that's happening related to short-term rentals in their neighborhoods, while also trying to be proactive in, like I just said, sort of responding to the marketplace, anticipating where it's gonna go, and to the best degree possible, future-proofing our regulations so that, you know, this activity can continue within a well-regulated and, you know, respectful manner. So it, when I hear comments that, oh, well, there, you know, there haven't been any complaints at my place or things like that, that very well is true, and I'm glad that that's the case. But it doesn't necessarily mean that there won't be issues in the future, not necessarily at your individual property, but just generally with the expanding activity in this market. So that's the balance that we've been trying to strike. We've, you know, been trying to give, you know, give a degree of priority to... you know, give a degree of priority to uh Cape Elizabeth residents for a way to have an auxiliary and supplemental use of their primary residents. And and the idea behind that has been that it will have a positive impact on uh from a number of standpoints, from from both um reducing absentee landlords to having people that have more skin in the game as it relates to the rental activity happening at their properties, to effectively, you know, reducing the number of home stay nights um overall and and reducing the activity overall. So that has been, as Penny said, sort of uh uh from the from the beginning, uh the threshold that we um started to work from and everything else has sort of built off of that. If 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 we were to go in a different direction, you know, there's other ways that we we could certainly structure an ordinance. That was the way the ordinance committee um determined, you know, was the way to be most responsive to the entire community's needs. There will definitely be some people that, you know, that i- if this were to pass, then that that compromise is is disadvantageous to them. And like Penny, I I um, you know, empathize with with some of those situations. But I think the the greater good is achieved um through what we've come up with here. The uh the last thing I would just say contextually is that if you look around at some of our neighboring communities, some other communities in the United States, um even as as written and drafted here today, this would remain among the more liberal uh ordinances in place as as far as short-term regulation uh rental regulations go. You have to look no further than South Portland where you see that um the type of activity that we're we're looking to permit and regulate here would largely not be permissible there, where um for the most part, uh an unhosted uh rental is not allowed in any uh residential zone. Um, so you know, there there are far more strict regulations that are out there. You know, some of which, you know, folks on the ordinance committee and others on this council have advocated for. And what we've tried to do here is very, I I I think elegantly and delicately, try and strike a balance between a lot of competing needs and wants and desires. And and I hope we've achieved that through what we've come up with.
Chris, go ahead.
Uh, yeah. So as usual, Jamie makes a number of very good points. Um, he and I often disagree on a number of various issues, but it's often in how we weigh the various factors um and if I'm in disagree with the actual factors are. So one of the things that uh he and Penny noted uh that I just want to um uh also um highlight is with respect to um public input, there was a, there has been a very good amount of uh public input on this. And um I think Penny did a wonderful job of really allowing a a lot of public comment continuously to the point where we occasionally had debates going on uh during these public comment periods because uh we we're allowing a lot of uh, we're being very flexible with the public input rules. Uh, but as to the the most vocal people kind of uh getting their way, I think it's the exact opposite. I think the most vocal people would say this is exactly contrary to what they would want. Um, I think most of them, as we've seen from the various emails and correspondences over the last few weeks, would say that the idea of unhosted rentals more than two or three weeks um is not what they would support. Not to put words in their mouth, but that's my guess. Uh, so I don't think that this reflects the viewpoint of the most vocal people. I think it represents the viewpoint of um of uh basically the people that want to allow to continue, allow this commercial activity continue continuing in residential zones. So uh I I wouldn't agree with that. I and I don't think the word arbitrary is the right um adjective or uh for the term. I think what it's more is it's uh unsound would be my viewpoint is. I think everyone already knows. I think the the logic and rationale underlying the ordinance is somewhat unsound. I- i- and it's not very well grounded. Again, that's just my viewpoint when I look at the factors. I don't think that this is supported by the comprehensive plan. I think it's contrary to the comprehensive plan. And for that reason, I won't be supporting it. But with respect to, I do want to highlight one aspect of this before our discussion really gets going here. And it's something that Penny said, and taking a step back and looking at all of this just from a 5,000-foot perspective objectively, it's 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 uh I find it intellectually curious because she was 100% spot on. And I was like, yeah, whatever. And she is, and Penny, I apologize if I in any way mischaracterize what you said, please correct me. She made the observation, the the 180-odd days for unhosted in this ordinance. Uh, the ordinance committee, I I didn't support any of these numbers. And I said, as one of the three numbers of the ordinance committee, whatever you guys want, uh, because I'm not going to hold this up. We need to just send this to the town council, get more more view. Uh, so it was really came from Penny and Jamie. And the numbers, uh, my understanding, and Penny, correct me if I'm wrong, is it's we're going to put place over and ho- hold our numbers in here. And she made the observation that she was concerned that we, if we don't address the numbers sooner rather than later, uh, she made the observation that these things tend to uh crystallize and freeze in place, even though it was meant in in, I apologize if you guys disagree with me, but my understanding is it was meant as a placeholder. But we have, in fact, crystallized around these numbers, which is quite interesting. Uh, why are we stuck with these numbers when, and I apologize, Jamie, if you disagree with me, when they in effect reflect what Jamie's consensus was of what the numbers should be. So it in in I I voted along with it to get out the committee and I my understanding was Penny viewed as a placeholder. Again, correct me if I'm wrong as to your viewpoint. But it does reflect one counselor's viewpoint as opposed to something we deliberated in great detail. But we've nevertheless, interestingly, uh much to my surprise, have uh really crystallized around these numbers. So I would ask us to, and Penny and Jamie, if I got any of that wrong, please correct me. But I'd ask us to remember that when we're looking at these numbers, when we're trying to decide, are these the numbers we want?
Valerie? Uh, sorry, Penny, did you have a direct response? Valerie, do you have a direct response to that?
I do. I do, actually. I'm I'm not a member of the ordinance committee, but I attended um a lot of the meetings, which as everyone said, were amazingly well-attended. We had so many residents there. There was so much discussion that uh it was very impressive because the committee had one idea, they'd listen, they'd move, they they were flexible. I I was really impressed. But I want to say um in response to what Chris was just saying about the days, Penny did say she didn't want a day, a certain amount of days in there so that it would look like that's stuck. But I don't think that's what happened, because at first, people were looking at 30 days, then 90 days for unhosted. Then um then then it moved to, well, um, if you're a primary resident, you, why couldn't you have 180 days or 182 days unhosted? Because then you'd still be a primary resident. Uh, and so it was that for quite a while. And then we had a workshop where we talked about reducing it and we reduced it to 90 days. Then we had another workshop and we changed it to 105 days to make it equal weeks. So I think that um the number has not been crystallized. We've really massaged it and worked with it. And I think that, as Jamie said, we've really tried to strike a balance here. I don't think it's one counselor's desire over anyone else. It's more of um numbers that we all came to at our last couple workshops.
Penny, go ahead.
Okay, this is in um direct response to Chris. Um, Chris, you articulated that perfectly, because that was one of my concerns as we moved it out of our committee to the um town council was that things become uh fixed. And I'm not saying that I'm not saying anything about that these were Jamie's ideas, but I'm just saying that we did keep having placeholders. And we said, let's send it to the council. That's where we will have the dialogue around this. And that's another reason why when Jeremy said the other night that, yeah, maybe we should workshop this one more time. To me, I saw that as the opportunity for us to delve into those numbers and 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 crystallize them a bit more, because it's traveled through the bureaucracy and it's going to stay that way until we step back and we say, does this make sense relative to a neighborhood? Does this make sense relative more rural part of our town? So you um you were spot on, Chris.
On that note, Penny, um, I had envisioned that the first thing we would talk about this evening was the numbers. So could we just get, I I don't know if people have in their minds kind of other numbers, um, or if we just needed to have more of a discussion around the current numbers. Um, so can I just have a quick show of hands? Who's satisfied with the current numbers? Jamie, Caitlin, and Valerie Deveraux. Okay. Um, so Penny, would you like to? Jamie?
Sure.
Do you have a comment before we start?
But yeah, I just, I just, I wanted to just uh reiterate a comment that I had made in our meeting last week, which which has to do with, you know, many of these components and elements of the ordinance working together collectively and and um, you know, not necessarily individually. And so, yes, I I I understand people thinking that a certain number of days is a very high threshold. And, you know, ultimately, I'm not averse to to coming up with something lower. But what I am also focused on is the practical reality that for very many people who their primary residence is the property that they will be potentially operating as a short-term rental and an unhosted one. It's not, uh, you know, it's it's not very common for many of those people that they're going to be renting it out for that long. And and particularly from the input we heard, you know, from from operators at our meetings. You know, when we asked people and told people, well, how long do you typically, you know, the 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 range was all over the place, but it was, you know, anywhere between probably about 30 to 90 days. You know, there were some that were at the far end of it, others that were at the lower end, uh, but it was somewhere within that window. But I think, uh, uh, you know, as a starting point, just the mere fact that what we're discussing is that it will have to be your primary residence. For the vast majority of the people, that's a much lower number that they're going to be functionally and effectively renting out the property. Are there some that will take full advantage? I have no doubt that there are. I I think, you know, for me, one of the, I think, one of one of my thoughts on addressing this was if if we're sort of taking something away, you know, is there something maybe not of of sort of equal value, but, you know, some degree of flexibility that can be created for folks on on the other side of that. Um, so that's sort of how I, you know, came to this. Do I think all of the unhosted rentals are going to be for 105 days in town? I think the exact opposite. But um anyway, so whether or not it's actually 105 or something lower, I I can be flexible on that. But that's, I just wanted to contextualize my thinking and my approach to to coming to that number. And and particularly in light of, you know, some of the emails we've gotten, as well as other um comments here tonight about things being arbitrary. That was my rationale. So it, you know, people can disagree with the rationale or not, but that that was how I was approaching it.
Thanks, Jamie. Um, so on the number of days, um I do you mind if I put you in the spotlight, Penny? I was hoping.
No, not at all. No. I I want to say that as I um uh read uh the emails that uh we received. And I I do want to stress to people that I read every single one of them, um, because short-term rentals have been my life for, I think, the last year. Um, and and I think it's a very uh critical issue that and we live in a town that uh provides us, the citizens provide us with data and I and I love it, that uh the amount of work that went into it. I do agree that with the uh hosted, um, that I still agree that to the no uh limit as to the number of days. I I I support that. Um, I do want to say that as I thought about the input that people were sending and I thought about our objectives and about um peace and tranquility in neighborhoods and that um how do you, how do you make sure or try to ensure that you're creating the least amount of opportunity to create a um um to create challenges within the neighborhood. Um, and so I think that the more days we have that are open to uh short-term rentals for the unhosted, the greater the opportunity is for there to be some sort of uh issue or challenges. So I started, and I appreciate the fact that the data was sent. Um, I started looking at, you know, the uh the four weeks or the three and a half weeks or something along those lines, because it goes back to the other thing that um as we were putting this together was uh allowing people an opportunity to leverage their asset, which is their house, in order to um uh help defray their taxes. Um, and so um as I looked at those numbers, I think people put forth some um really um good uh information about what uh what are those number of days. So I I stepped back and I started looking at the um uh the four weeks. So um, and then I started looking at for um the seven acres or greater that are non-primary and um and the um unhosted that because they aren't um immersed in a a neighborhood and it um it isn't I I considered that this could be a place where we're looking at um potentially uh three months, that range. Uh, so that would be greater. And then I started thinking about how do we, how do we manage that? Because if people, when they're applying for their uh permit, they need to say whether they're hosted or unhosted. Um, and I would assume that that criteria gets put into the um the software, the utility that we use in order to um monitor short-term rentals. And so uh we would have criteria around each of these short-term rental models that would be uh put into their um system and would be able to manage them accordingly. So I say unlimited, then uh it can be, you know, four weeks, it can be 30 days, it's something in that range. And um and then for the um unhosted, greater than seven acres, non-primary residents, that it would be a a greater number of days because they aren't sitting in um a neighborhood. So something in the three-month range. That's what I would throw out there.
Um, Penny, do you mind just organize all my documents here? Do you mind just running through your categories and numbers quickly again? I can jot them down.
Sure, sure, sure. We have the first one, which is the uh primary residence hosted. And I still support that that could be um not limited. I mean, the people are there. They, it it is what it is. Um, I think that can work. The uh primary residence unhosted. I think that um as I I looked at the data that was given, it's like 30 days seems to be a reasonable amount of time to help uh meet the objective around defraying taxes, which is one of the things we talked about. Uh, the uh seven, greater than seven acres non-primary residents and um unhosted, that we could be in the um in the three-month range for that. And that also also includes the uh a button. And that's uh, yeah. Does that make sense?
Okay. Jeremy, I'm going to call on you next because I see you nodding along. Are you largely in agreement with the numbers that Penny just set forth?
I, I think that sounds more in line with what I was thinking. Yes. I, you know, I appreciate Jamie's observation that with the higher numbers that we were envisioning, relatively few properties are probably going to hit those max. I, I understand that, that, that makes sense to me. I think the, yeah, I always think, I, I didn't have a specific number in mind for any of them. I support the idea of, of not having a cap on the hosted rentals. I think something in that 30 range for the primary residences makes sense to me. And I also support the idea of having a, a higher cap for the seven acre plus properties, just as Penny noted, because the, the, the impact on neighbors is likely to be significantly less. So yes, in, in general, that, that sounds more in line with, with what I was thinking. I think it would also be consistent with the many of the comments that we've received. And I, I guess the other factor that I'm still trying to think about and weigh in with this is based on our following our meeting last week where we discussed what the actual fees are going to look like. I just, I, I want to make sure that we I guess one concern I have with a 30-day rental cap and a $500 annual fee is that when you start to take into account the other expenses of operating a short-term rental in terms of a cleaning service and whatnot, I wonder if we're actually allowing enough room for people who are relying on that as a way to help defray some of their tax expenses to make enough money for the activity to be, to be worthwhile. So just paying attention to that interplay between the fees and the other aspects of the ordinance. I, I thank you for the, the many folks who've written in with their, with their analysis on, you know, how much people are charging and how that relates to, to property taxes. I think that's very useful additional data to have for this discussion. But I, I just, what I, so I guess I, I could support a slightly higher number than 30. But I, yes, in general, it's in line with mine.
Valerie?
I, I too want to thank everyone who sent us all of the emails and gave us all the projections on taxes, but I'd also like to say that with the pandemic going on, I have a feeling that there are going to be some people that need to rent out their place, not just to pay taxes. There's a lot of people out of work. There may be people that need that help for more than just paying taxes. And I feel that it's, it's, doesn't really, it's not really clear when you say seven acres unhosted is two months. But then if it's seven acres hosted, it would only be four weeks. So I think we need to make it just seven acres, correct? Because you're saying hosted would be and, oh, because it's a non, it's a primary res, it's a non-primary residence, they can only have it unhosted for. All right. So that would be two months or eight weeks. It just seems that if we made it eight weeks across the board, it would be easier to, to enforce. That way, and Maureen, maybe you can speak to this. How difficult is it going to be to enforce if we have some of the unhosted for four weeks and some of them for eight weeks? Is that going to create a problem?
Is it all right? Do you want me to answer? Okay. Chair Adams. So I, I don't do the enforcement, the co-enforcement officer does, and I know he's present at this meeting. But we've talked about it and not putting words in his mouth. Honestly, the shorter amount of period that people are renting, the easier the enforcement will be. Because it's the renting next to people who are expecting peaceful, quiet, and enjoyment that's creating the friction point. So I think if the choice is to have an across-the-board number for all the different types of short-term rentals that's higher, then if you were going to lower some of those numbers, he would prefer a lower amount of rental days. And he's here now.
Ben, if there's anything you'd like to add to that, please feel free to jump in.
It, it is, the less categories is easier, although with the way we're setting up the new software, we should be able to follow those relatively clearly with those defined categories, but also what, what Maureen said is accurate.
Chris?
Yeah, so this is moving in the direction of more reasonable, in my mind, just my opinion. Two weeks, I think, would be the more reasonable for unhosted. It balances the various demands people have. I still think it, it's not what I would want. I don't think it's necessarily justified, but two weeks seems more reasonable. It meets the, the, the property tax arguments that people have noted it. Two to three weeks will cover most people's, a good number of people's property taxes in town. And to Jeremy's point, one approach that we could adopt to deal with the fee, the fee issue would be to have a lower fee of like $50. And for that $50, you get to rent for only two weeks. And you have to designate those two weeks ahead of time as part of your application process. That makes enforcement, I would imagine, very easy. Because if everyone on their ad has to list their, their permit number, the permit number would be tied directly to an exact two weeks that they're permitted to be advertising. And if they're advertising anything other than those two weeks, and we give that to whoever the vendor is, they presumably would be able to very quickly identify it. So that'd be a way we could address the issue that Jeremy raised, which would basically be have another category that says two weeks, cheaper permit, you designate the two weeks as part of the permit process. And I did want to touch on that seven acres aspect. And I understand the concerns some have raised that it seems kind of just like this, this arbitrary number that we've chosen. But for me, the rationale underlying it is the fact that, at least just my personal view, our zoning ordinance is messed up. And one of the things we need to do, there, there are many things that need to be fixed in that zoning ordinance, but one of the things we should have done is, as part of the comp plan, is we should have created new districts in town. And the problem is we have these massive, massive districts that encompass areas of town that are very, very, very different. And we're trying to apply this blanket approach to these very different areas of town. And the seven acres is an attempt to, it's kind of a poor man's attempt to to treat certain types of properties within one massive district differently. At least that's what my view of. I was not in an arbitrary and capricious way, but it's kind of a shorthand attempt to identify the properties where they're not near their neighbors, where, where the, the visitors coming, where they're making noise and there's no one there monitoring them 24/7 with skin in the game. Game, there's a less of a probability that it is having an adverse impact on the abutters. So I think that, at least from my, that was my understanding of what the rationale was for the seven acres and why it's in there. And yes, I agree, it would be better if we simply had more detailed districts that were a little different, but we don't have that and we're working with what we do have.
Jamie?
Thanks. I think what concerns me about reducing the number of days so greatly and even further restricting and regulating in the way that Chris just suggested with having to pre-designate weeks and all that kind of stuff is that we're then potentially setting up a pretty extensive and complicated infrastructure system for tracking and managing and regulating this for what will ultimately wind up being a very, very small amount of activity. And to be quite frank, I think I could be much more easily swayed to just eliminating unhosed rentals altogether versus trying to come up with this very complicated set of boxes that you need to check for what I think will really be, you know, a complete fraction of the activity. And to me, question, I, I, I question why there's any value and what, what makes it worthwhile to even set it up in that way to begin with. So I, I think, I, I agree with both Maureen and Ben's comments about trying to keep things as simple as possible. We've heard that consistently from, from them throughout the ordinance development process. We've heard that, that they've relayed that to us from folks like host compliance that, that, you know, the simpler that you keep these things, they easily, more easily regulated and monitored and enforced that they are. So anyway, that's just my response and, and reaction to that. At some point too, and that we don't have to, I don't want to take us away from the discussion of the dates, but Valerie, I do want to register a point. It's in response to the email that Maureen forwarded to us from Ben about concerns around enforcement and, and so on and so forth. So again, don't want to, don't want to take us on a tangent from where we are right now on the, on the days allowable discussion, but if I could just sort of pre-register that as something else I want to discuss on, so.
Are you referring to section F sub eight, good neighbor conduct?
Yeah. And so Deb, Deb Blaine had forwarded us all the email that Ben sent through Maureen like a week or so ago. Almost two weeks ago now. So.
Yeah, I have that sort of slotted next. So
Okay.
We'll get there.
Thanks.
Okay. Jeremy, yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask Jamie a follow-up question. So when you say that shorter time period, are you referring to the two-week time period that Chris was talking about, or were you referring to the numbers mentioned?
Well, I think generally, if I, if I may, Valerie, generally, just the further we reduce it, the less active, you know, we're, we're really driving down, I think, the, the number of potential amount of activity. And I just start to question the cost benefit of, you know, so whether it's 30, 14, 14 with pre-designated week, I mean, you know, you work your way down this funnel and all of a sudden there's hardly any activity and we've, you know, structured a very complicated ordinance for something that in my opinion, my prediction won't really exist that much anymore. A question I did want to ask for folks that are gravitating down towards a lower number in the vicinity of 30 days, 28 days, whatever that is. I don't know if anybody, I, I was thinking of this earlier today in anticipation of this being an evolving majority opinion of the group. And I don't know if anybody has any thoughts because we didn't really talk about it much when we were talking about such higher numbers to begin with in the ordinance committee meetings. But at a lower total cap, if anybody has any opinion on changing the current seven-day cycle period. So currently, you know, you can, you can, so at, at 28 days or 30 days roughly, you would basically only be able to have four bookings. So what, and if you're charging on a per-night basis, you know, that might not be the full seven nights. So I, I think I can come around to a much lower number. I, I, I'm not in agreement, but I, I, I think I could come around to, and I think it would, it would at least go some way to, again, achieving that balance that I've been so focused on if we then altered the requirement that it be a, a full seven-day rent cycle. I don't, and I don't know if that, not having really thought this through very much, but I don't, I don't know. I would be in favor of just eliminating it altogether and you could rent single nights and have 30 people rent over 30 nights or have it be a two or three-night minimum. I, I understand the purpose of the seven days is to limit the turnover. I think when we've, if, if we wind up going so far in the direction of limiting, limiting the total number of nights, again, on the, on the, on the concept of some give and take and flexibility of compromise, I, I would be interested in opening that up for discussion.
Penny?
Yeah, I, I didn't think about it in those terms, Jamie, but I did think about, and maybe you guys can help me. I did think about the fact that it's not, when I talk days, I'm not talking consecutive, I guess, because you could have somebody rent for three days, one week, and then a couple of weeks later, somebody rents for four. I think it's cumulative. I don't know if that makes sense, but that's kind of what I thought about.
Valerie?
Well, I remember the committee talking quite a bit about this and we were talking about keeping it at one week so that you didn't have a lot of turnover during the week. So I could see where somebody has one week in June, one week in July, one week in August, maybe something like that is not cumulative. But once you start going to days, then why not just have it for 90 days rather than turnovers every day? Because it's the same thing. It's all that turnover is what people are having problem, one of the problems. But the other thing that I believe was Jamie brought up at one of the previous meetings is that we're, we're reducing the number of rentals by making it primary residence. And right now, a lot of the problems are from non-primary owners, residents that are not primary. So it just seems that we're, I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater, make this so restrictive on people that aren't really causing problems. And my guess is there are people out there that two weeks renting is not going to pay their taxes. Especially once you pay a fee, you pay the cleaning people. Even with the spreadsheets we were given, some of those spreadsheets said three and a half weeks, four weeks, depending on the home and depending what people charge, two weeks, I don't know that would even cover taxes. So it just seems that making, if you're going to say seven acres unhosted, two months, why not just say all unhosted, two months? Or eight weeks? And that way, it's uniform. And the other thing I wanted to point out is when we talked about the seven acres, a lot of that, my understanding was the Sprague property with the camps out there. No, it's not. Okay. All right. So this is different properties.
That's only, that's only part of it. There's a number of properties, other properties that are greater than seven acres that do have short-term rentals. And so and there's, we had some scenarios around a budding property. And we had, so there's a number of scenarios out there. And much of the, the, when you look at the properties that meet the criteria of greater than seven acres, it is about, Chris alluded to it. It's about properties that are outside of neighborhoods. And it, it really represents more of the, the rural aspects of capitalism. So that was kind of the logic around it.
Jamie?
I just wanted to ask either Maureen, I think Maureen, you're the best suited to answer this, but on, on Penny's interpretation of those days, I, I guess I'm not clear. I had thought that whether you rent for a day or you rent for seven days, it counts as seven days. And that seven days, whether you had somebody in it or not, counts towards your rental threshold. Is that? Is that accurate? Say that again?
Yes. So when the ordinance was originally adopted in 2012, one of the main complaints was the churn in the neighborhood. So the ordinance was written for a minimum seven-day stay. And what we have discovered with the current ordinance is there are some people who have found ways to interpret the language so that it's necessarily seven days. And some of the bitterest complaints we've received has been about the people who are moving in and out of properties in less than seven days. So the current draft, we feel like we've closed as many of those loopholes that we can imagine by making it explicitly clear that you can have one rental per seven days. And if someone only stays for three or four days, say they, they come for a long And if someone only stays for three or four days, say they, they come for a long holiday weekend, you still have locked up your property for seven days. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it it does. And so I think, I think the interpretation that I understand is that that thirty days isn't spread out individually then, right?
You can, we've had during this current process, had a conversation at one point that thirty days would have to be consecutive. Theater track and that.
Right.
Draft and then it was gone. So right now, and you, if you say thirty days, the idea would be that you would be able to rent your property for seven day blocks for different times of your choosing. And just so we're clear, I know people are getting really, you know, concerned about thirty is not evenly divided by seven. You know, just because you say thirty days and it has to be a seven day block, someone could rent their property for a ten day block. So you've got seven, seven, seven and ten.
Right.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
I think so.
Penny, did you have something to add to that?
I just, I'm just looking at the brain trust here on the screen. And because I think we're coming to, we're closing in on something that could be logical. And we just need to figure out, and I'll look at Jamie, Valerie and Jeremy and Chris and Caitlin, I can't see anymore. So what logically makes sense to if one wants to reduce the number of days from a hundred and five to a number of days that meets the requirements that we have kind of been talking about, which is we want to help people defray their taxes. We don't want them to have to within that absorb all of the expenses that might be associated with the long term rental fees, et cetera. So we want them to consider that. And Valerie Deveraux had an interesting point that there are going to be some other challenges that people might have as a result of COVID, et cetera. Not that I want to delve too much over there. But I think we're honing in on that we have a set of requirements and that we could come up with a a number of days or a number of weeks that logically makes sense based on that criteria. And I think Jamie, you kind of started alluding to it around, okay, we got the seven day thing. And I had thought about it from a different direction, but had erroneously thought about the seven in incorrect way. But what do you guys think? I mean, there is a number that makes sense based on what we put forward. And I just can't wrap my head around it.
Chris?
I don't subscribe to this rationale, but to attempt to answer your question under perhaps the rationale you want to subscribe to. I think what I would ask, if I was approaching it, I think from the way you're approaching it would be, do I want this program to allow people to pay the entirety of their taxes or a portion of their taxes? If I'm looking to, if I say it's fair to allow them to pay a portion of their taxes, I would hew towards the two weeks. If I'm saying I want them, I want to be sure most people will be able to pay the entirety of their taxes, I would hew towards four weeks. And I'd, I'd settle on that thirty day number. If I'm saying I want them to be able to not only pay their taxes, but use this as a way to make a living, then I'd be going for a higher number. And that's the, the approach I would take. And I think it sounds like we have a general consensus that four weeks should be enough for most, most people at the rates people are looking at to cover their taxes, even with the fees. So if you say thirty, which is a little more than four weeks, that seems like a pretty fair number. If that's the rationale and the goal that you're proceeding under, but I could be wrong. I'm curious if anyone else has a different view.
I agree with you, Chris. I'm not going to vote for the ordinance regardless for other reasons, but in terms of the thirty days, I think that makes a lot of sense. Jeremy?
Yeah. And I guess I just to add on to that, I appreciate the the thought that people have put into looking at this in terms of how the, the rental income relates to people's property taxes. The fact of the matter is, if you're renting out your home as a short term rental, it's your income you can do with it as, as you want. And so that, that's one factor that I'm thinking about. The other is just coming back to this idea of the short term rental as an accessory use to the primary use for the property, which is as a primary residence. And, you know, I think that something in that, in that thirty to fifty day range is, is well within the span of what I would consider to be an accessory use. I know there's some folks who are going to say, well, that's still the whole summer if it's a fifty days. Every week is going to be rented out with turnover and I'm sensitive to that too. But so I, I think I, I think, you know, that that's the range that I'm looking at is, is in that thirty to fifty day range. And I can, I could see myself, you know, being fully supportive of any number that fell in that range.
Caitlin?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was in the same time range. I was thinking more forty five days and making sure that it's clear that it's not consecutive. Like you can do forty five days throughout the year at any point. So we talked about that always back, I raised my hand, but then we moved on, but it doesn't matter. I just want, my understanding was that it was going to be non-consecutive forty five days or whatever number we land on. But I'm with you, Jeremy, in that same timeframe. I'm comfortable going anywhere between thirty and fifty.
But I mean, doesn't that technically mean that someone could go out of town every weekend for forty five weekends of the year and that property could be turned over all of those times, which I understand is not going to be the majority of cases. And there may only be a few properties that do this, but I do in fact know of more than one individual who has done something like that, gone away many weekends and rented the property out.
Forty five days, you would think a weekend would be three days. So that only gives them fifteen weekends to do that.
Well, unless they do, two nights and it could end up being a lot of weekends.
It could end up being twenty two, but it's not going to be forty five.
And Jamie?
I thought we, I thought we just said though, that if they rent for a two or three night weekend, it counts as seven days.
It does.
So that I, unless I'm misinterpreting that, unless I'm not understanding that correctly, I don't think what you're both supposing is a hypothetical is accurate. Right now, that might be happening because there is no limit. But, but as a practical matter moving forward, I, I don't, I, I think that's what Maureen just spoke to is the, as part of closing that loophole. So if I'm, if I'm misunderstanding that, I'm happy to be set correct on it, but I don't think that that's either how the language reads or what the intent is either. So.
Maureen, do you just, could you just clarify? I'm looking at the ordinance, but.
It's so good. And, and I mean, we have to make a distinction between what the ordinance says now, what the proposed ordinance says and what you want it to say, because in the end, you could depart from the way it is right now and you could depart from the proposal. But the way the ordinance is written right now, every short term rental stay is supposed to be no less than seven days. And unfortunately, some.
Every booking, Maureen, not, not, not necessarily, you know, somebody could, you know, somebody, that could be considered a booking window. And maybe that's the language we should be using here.
For a minimum of seven days, we, we can't lock people in a house for seven days. So they could stay for three or four days and then the house needs to stay empty for the remaining week. And then on day seven, you can rent it again. And the, the proposed ordinance sticks with that theme, writes it even more strongly, includes the casual family members, friends are going to visit, which we are getting complaints about now. And so if you stick with that seven days and you say, and the other thing is we are not with the big caps, like the thirty days or the hundred and five days. There is nothing that says those have to be one week after another. If you have a hundred and five days, that's about fifteen weeks. I think that's what you figured out. The assumption would be if someone is going to maximize their revenue, is they're going to rent for three months in the summer and then they're going to pick up three holidays. And they'll get their fifteen weeks. So they don't have to be consecutive weeks, but there needs to be a booking of seven days. Okay.
There are a bunch of hands up. Valerie and then Chris jump right in.
That was my understanding also. And if we talk about forty five days, that's only six weeks. So if somebody rented it out for a weekend, that would be six weekends in the year because that counts for seven days if they only stay for three days. So that's only six weeks, forty five days. I think that sounds very reasonable. And I would agree to that. It looks like Valerie had to step away. Matt?
Great, we can have a praise for all.
I think that's accurate. Her video and audio just when she may have to attend to something at home. Counselor Garvin, oh, his Valerie's back.
Sorry, I thought, I thought that I said that, but I think I was muted. I said I have to step away for a minute so Chris could jump right in.
I, I would just wanted to point out, or I just wanted to note something that Jeremy noted about bringing back in the discussion about accessory use. And it's a little tongue in cheek, but if an accessory use is a use that's incidental and subordinate to the principal use, for me, that would imply that it's a use that's occurring when the other use is also present. So if one were to say that this, that we're looking at this as an accessory use to the principal use of it being a residential use, that residential use should be happening when the accessory use is occurring, which would, for me, indicate that we should really be looking at not allowing unhosted stays. So if we're looking at this as an accessory use, for me, that hews, causes us to lean towards Jamie's point, if we're going to make this so complex, why don't we just only, only allow hosted stays? Because I was persuaded during our various discussions and whatnot that the hosted, as people know, it's the unhosted stays that are causing almost all of the problems that were. If that's the case, why are we allowing these things if we can make this so simple by simply eliminating them and allow the hosted stays to continue relatively unrestricted?
Okay. Sorry about that. Thank you. Penny has a hand up next.
I was going to, I guess it's similar to Valerie Deveraux, but I was going to go to the six weeks, the forty, forty two days, which I think can be sufficient for unhosted primary resident rent, short term rental. And so I was going to go in that realm of the six weeks, forty two days. And it's in, it's in like Jamie says and Maureen, and it's in the seven week blocks. So you block, once somebody rents, that block is taken, whether it's three days or five days or one day.
It sounds like there's maybe some consensus around the six weeks ish time period. So.
Can I, can I clarify? Because I'm not talking about the seven acres or greater.
Right, right. Just in terms of the, the primary unhosted, I just want to sort of take these off as we go and see if we can move through them. So could I just have a quick show of hands as to who would support? I mean, it seems like forty five days has been the number that most people have thrown out. So Penny, Jeremy, Valerie and Caitlin. Okay. Jamie, did you have another comment on that?
I did. I did because Maureen made a passing reference to something that I had meant to bring up as a point and had completely forgotten about. And as we went along through the ordinance committee meetings and we added in fairly late in the game, the point that she just referenced around all stay types, whether they're actual rentals or friends and family or what have you, all being bundled into the category and definition of, of the the use and, and being a rental, even if there was no transaction, even if it legitimately was friends and family that you were loaning the house to or, or just having them come by. And I've always been uncomfortable with that. I understand its intent and purpose because I know that people are using that as a, as a workaround right now. However, I, I philosophically disagree particularly with family, but also with, with, you know, people who are close friends or what have you, with somebody's inability to say, here, come and use my property. When there's, there's no financial transaction happening, it's not, it has nothing to do with business at all when that's legitimately happening. I, I was slightly accepting of its inclusion based on the higher threshold such that, well, if for two weeks I have my, you know, in-laws and nieces and nephews come and use the house. And yes, that'll count against my total allotment of, of available booking days. But I've still got enough other income generating days. Then, you know, I have no concern, you know, I have less concern about that. I, 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 I don't know that I, 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 you know, I, I think, I think we definitely need to revisit understanding the, the problems that it causes. I think we definitely need to revisit that if, if we're considering non-income earning days as part of that total allotment.
I, there are some hands up that I, Valerie, did you have a response to Jamie?
I, I'm just going to say I completely agree and I don't think that it's our place to tell people that they can't have friends and family for three months visiting them. So I think we, we have to change that. That just doesn't seem like something that we are setting out to to enforce. It just, it doesn't seem right to me.
Caitlin, did you have a comment on that specifically?
Yeah, I was gonna say, Jamie, thank you for bringing that up because I totally agree as well. I, I forgot about why I was going with such a high number to begin with. But that's correct. I think we need to definitely look at that because you can't tell people that they can't have their family come visit because they've maxed out their six weeks. I'm not on board with that.
Penny?
When I looked at that, again, this afternoon, one of the things I thought about is that the decision that's being made when somebody decides to do short term rental is they are, they are running a business. And I know it sounds harsh. But when you get your permit and you put your house out there and you start offering for a short term rental, you've made a decision about how your property is going to be used. And my heart says that that's too bad that the family, that the family is going to count against those days. But the fact. But the fact is, one's making a choice of how they're going to use their property. So I, I, I don't have the need to remove that at this point in time, even with 42 days.
Chris?
I just wanted to note that having your family come for a visit for three months, and I asked the code enforcement officer and the town planner to weigh in on this, doesn't in any way implicate any aspect of the short-term rental ordinance because they're there for more than 30 days. So they're not in the world of short-term rentals. So I think this is a red herring. To the extent that we're instead talking about having family come and visit for a week or whatnot, if you're there on the premises, that's a hosted short-term rental. And we can get into the, oh, if you have to pick one category or the other, that aspect of things. But I think Penny's point that if you've gone the route of saying, I'm going to be doing unhosed and short-term rentals, then yeah, these are businesses and that's just a cost you're going to incur in that you've chosen to go down that route of basically commoditizing your neighbors' peaceful, quiet neighborhood. And if so, I don't feel sorry for you that you then can't have your family come and stay when you're already inflicting this on your neighbors. If you go down that route, you reap what you sow. But again, if you're just having family come and visit for extended periods of time, for more than 30 days, they're not even in this realm. But you guys have also highlighted a fundamental flaw in all of this. And that one, and I'd be curious if the code enforcement officer and the town planner can weigh on this. If you do have people coming to visit, even if it's hosted, do you have to get a permit? If my extended family come and visit, they're technically, are they tenants? Do I need a permit? Do I have to pay $500 to have friends come and visit even if I'm there and it's hosted? It's a curious question with respect to how this is drafted. Obviously, we wouldn't intend that, but I'm curious what the language said.
Maureen or Ben, just jump in with a response. Maureen says Ben.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't consider family visiting a house as a, as a short-term rental. I think that if it's your primary residence, friends and family can visit you and that's completely unrelated to short-term rental.
Even if it's, if the primary resident is not in residence, so it's just the family at the house?
No, that, that would be different if the family is not present. But if you, if you are having family come visit you while you're in the house, I mean, that's, that's a single-family use that has nothing to do with short-term rental. If, if you're allowing friends and family to use your house for a week when you're not there, then that appears as a short-term rental.
Matt, did you have something to add?
If I may, Adam Chair, I know last summer it was consistently raised as an issue and as a red flag where it was in many ways being employed as a way to work around the current ordinance. Oh, these guys are my family. But it's awful hard to go and prove consanguinity or family relationships that go through there. And that's, that's a burden that's awfully tough on the code enforcement officer to then prove where someone may find that they have shelter in order to work around the rules. So that's kind of why this had to come up because it was consistently and flagrantly being violated last year. We just didn't have the authority to be able to pursue it in that fashion.
Jamie?
I was just going to respond to Penny and Chris's points about, you know, Penny, you were saying, hey, you're entering into a business and so on and so forth. I think the key difference here again comes back to the whole notion of the changing dynamic and definition of the activity whereby we're reorienting it to it being your primary residence. And Chris, I'll use the word supplemental use instead of accessory use. If that, if that is more satisfactory, but it's, in that case, you know, if I'm, you know, if I'm going to be away and my in-laws who live, you know, in central Maine want to come and use my house for the week so that they can, you know, have access to the beach and stuff like that, I think that's a very different proposition than than generating income from property. And so I just philosophically disagree with that.
Valerie?
I, I understand, Matt, how this got put in and why. But I have to agree with Jamie that philosophically it's not right. The other thing that I think what you're going to have happen is that there's going to be people without permits that have family come for a week, come for two weeks, and maybe the next month they have another family member come for two weeks. So now they have to go get a, a short-term rental permit or they get turned in by someone that they're renting it out. It just seems like you're going to create more problems because now you're going to have people that don't have permits that are going to have family staying. So how are you going to police that knowing that, oh, this is a, it's actually a short-term rental that doesn't have a permit? Or is it somebody who really is just having family come and stay? It, it just seems like it's going to create more problems.
I don't, I don't think it needs to operate that way. If, if someone is not operating their house as a short-term rental, I do think that a friend or family could stay at their house. It's when someone chooses to become a short-term rental and make income from their property that will be strictly regulating their property and turnover on their property. So if someone chooses, if someone chooses not to get a permit and not to make any income on their property and they allow friends and family to stay, we would not be enforcing the short-term rental ordinance on them. That's my view of it at this point.
Just a quick question for Maureen, our excellent drafter. Is that the way the proposed ordinance reads?
No. If I understand what Ben said, if you have a short-term rental permit, anytime anybody is using your property, it's counted towards your number of short-term rental days. And that's what, you're agreeing to that, Ben? Yes. So I mean, I understand folks are uncomfortable with this and I'm sorry you're uncomfortable. And I would ask you to remember that for people who are living next to a short-term rental property, it doesn't really matter to them whether the person moving in and out and running up and down the street is related to the owner or is a stranger who's paying for a week. And, you know, your struggle is you're trying to balance all these different competing desires.
Ben, did you have something else to add?
Yeah, well, Maureen, the question was if someone is not a short-term renter and someone chooses to stay at their house for a few days, does that require them to get a short-term rental permit? And does the short-term rental ordinance apply to someone who does short-term rental?
Absolutely not. If you're not, if, if you are not in the short-term rental business, if you're not enrolling in an online platform and trying to rent to people and you're just someone who likes to have family from out of state visit, you don't have a permit on file, you're never even going to come across the code officer's radar, which is a very busy radar. I take his calls. It's only if you are actually running a short-term rental. And if you got a permit or you're running one and someone makes a complaint and our third-party software says, well, it appears that you are renting out property, your property to other people, then it's going to get triggered. Is that correct, Ben?
Yes.
Okay, Jamie, go ahead.
I think we, I, I agree with that as a, as a definition. I think we either need to tighten up or further specify in what we have as a definition in this draft ordinance, what short-term rental is then, because the very vague clause of the first sentence, otherwise making available for transient occupancy has nothing to do with presupposing that the person is a registered operator of a short-term rental. That, that's a pretty open-ended and open for interpretation clause that suggests that, well, if I'm making it available to friend or family, whether I have decided to be a registered short-term rental operator or not, then by this definition, that activity is defined that way. So I, I think we're on the same page on intent. I think the language might not exactly reflect that.
Maureen?
That in the end, it's going to be up to the code enforcement officer. And if he receives a complaint, he's going to call Mr. and Mrs. Jones and they're going to say, our sons were up for the week and these are their names. And he'll have to make a determination on whether he's going to pursue enforcement. And I think he's going to be able to figure out when someone is hosting a family and when someone is trying to repeatedly rent their property without getting necessary permits. But the problem, if you, if you take out the language that says, or otherwise, that is the loophole that we, we have people using now.
Based on that, I think it was Jamie, Valerie and Caitlin who had concerns about that. Where do you stand on the 42 or 45 days? Just trying to see if we can get, you know, I, I know I'm not voting in favor of the ordinance. Chris is not. So I just want to see where there is and is not consensus on that number for the primary unhosed. Valerie?
I guess I would go, go along with it for the, for the six weeks. It just seems really severe for somebody who's having a hosted rental, but I understand the reason for putting it in. I would, I would go with that, but I would also agree to increasing it by a couple of weeks. I don't know. I guess I would just go with it.
Caitlin, what's your position?
Nodding along with you. I mean, I would agree with it. I mean, even adding a couple of weeks, six weeks to rent it, a couple of weeks to have family come. But at the same point, I hear Penny's point that if you're choosing to rent it and make a business out of it and you give up the right to have your family come up and use that time. So I hear both sides. So I'm, I'm good. We can move along.
So that would be a majority in support of. Jeremy, where are you at right now?
I'm still fine with the, I, I'm fine with, based on the explanation that we've heard. And I would also just note, you give up the right to have your family come up when you're not there. I tend to stick around when my family comes to visit, but maybe I'm odd that way.
Okay, so we have a majority for, there were two numbers thrown out. There was 45 days, which is not, does not break down into sevens. And then there was 42. I think the majority of people had favored 45 days over the 42. So Penny, you have your hand up?
No, I'll let you finish. Never mind.
So just a quick show of hands on the 45 days for primary unhosed.
What's it, that people were saying six weeks and not 45 days? Can I, that's, was it six weeks that people were saying?
Both were thrown out, so.
It's 42 days, right?
Yeah.
Do we, it sounds like we prefer seven. So, okay, so six weeks. Quick show of hands, please. So Penny, Valerie, Caitlin, Jeremy. Jamie gave a non-committal wave, but I think he doesn't generally support that of being a good sport for the sake of moving along. Okay, so other than Penny bringing up 90 days for the seven-plus acres and a budding and Valerie mentioning eight weeks across the board, I didn't get a sense that most people were uncomfortable with the other numbers. If someone else is, please do jump in, but let's just do a quick show of hands for seven-plus acres and a budding unchanged as, as are written out in the proposed ordinance. Whoops, I was muted, sorry. So that's, that's everyone except Chris and myself. Okay, so I think that we have resolved that, yes, Maureen and Penny are both waving. Penny and then Maureen.
Did we, I'm sorry, I sometimes lose my place. Did we resolve Jamie's question around the definition of short-term rental? Because I thought he had a question, which I thought was very meaningful because the otherwise making available for, did we resolve that, that the definition stays as is?
So my understanding was that this last question, people in favor of the, the six weeks, was leaving that as is in the proposed ordinance. Okay. Does that change your point of view? You were muted, Penny.
I just wanted to know if it was resolved, if people think it was resolved.
Does, if anyone did not intend that, please raise your hand now. Okay, Maureen?
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry to make this difficult for you, but under the seven acres plus, it was, it, it has applied to both primary residents and non-primary residents. And it keeps going back and forth depending on how many days you assign to primary residents unhosed. And as long as seven acres is going to have 182 days, I think you need to say that the seven acres is going to apply to people who it is primary residents and non-primary residents, because right now it just says non-primary residents. So I'm going to assume with some of the nods that everyone's okay with me making that change.
I think that was the intention.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so the, hang on, I will be, I'm just going to close the door. Um, so we have a consensus on the number of days unless anyone else wants to bring something up. The next item, which Jamie had referred to, was the email about enforcement from Ben, which included both the section F sub eight, good neighbor conduct, and also the fine issue. So Jamie, do you just, now that we have Ben right here, did you want to pose a question specifically or start that discussion?
I'm happy to. So Ben, I really appreciate your input on this. I know how difficult this is both in terms of what you deal with currently and what we're looking at on a proposed basis as well. I think that as you've probably seen from following along with all of the work of the committee, I think that, as you've probably seen from following along with all of the work of the committee and the discussions council level, this has been the hardest thing for us to try and work into the proposed new language. Because as we've seen all along, it's very difficult to actually regulate the problem behavior in a meaningful way. And so much of what we're trying to do is put in sort of proactive upstream measures that will serve as more of a deterrent, as opposed to trying to actually cite and respond to that activity as it's happening or in response to it. So for me individually, and I think I've heard the view shared amongst the council, this is a really important thing for us to try and work in here. And I understand your reticence to taking it on. There's a few things, though, that, from how you describe your concerns, I just wanted to have some discussion about. So the first was that you were sort of envisioning just this constant appeal cycle for decisions that might be rendered, whether you're the one that's actually, you know, making the decision or responsible for a hearing or if it winds up being somebody else. One of the things that I think we've done, it's a really positive change to the, for the proposed language, is that the permits would run on a calendar basis, right? So whether you apply for the permit in January or you apply for it in November, you still have to, so all of that activity is going to be happening at the same time. So I would imagine that any disputes around denial of permit would then become a much more condensed window, right? So if you're, you know, if we're issuing all of the permits in January and there's been some sort of component that factors in, well, what was your, you know, reported behavior like for the past year, you know, that feeds into that renewal or approval process, then, you know, in January and bleeding into February is probably when all those disputes would be, right? It's probably not going to continue on through the rest of the year, right?
Well, it could. Disputes can carry on for, you know, six months or a year in Superior Court. That, what you're saying does help. It helps concentrating those into January and February. But I do see it as a double-edged sword, where we're going to get evidence on both sides of the equation and likely get appealed. I look at situations where my decision is going to be appealed regardless of what I decide. And those situations are bad for legal expenses. And so I see if we're going to have issues between neighbors, that I'm going to have evidence submitted on both sides of the equation. I'm going to make a decision. It's going to be appealed to the zoning board of appeals regardless of what decision I make. And then likely could go to Superior Court from there.
Okay. I understand, I mean, there's people that are just going to fight it no matter what, is basically what you're saying, as I understand it. But when we envisioned this, we were trying to make an analog to the current liquor license process. And so can you help walk through what, I mean, what does that look like for you? And, you know, if we, I don't think we've denied a liquor license in the almost five years that I've been on the council. It's a pretty perfunctory renewal kind of vote that we take almost every month. But what does that look like?
Well, liquor license.
What are some of the factors that go into, like, if you were to provide us with a report that says, "I'm not so sure I recommend, you know, renewal of this license and here's why." I don't think I've seen one, like I said, in the almost five years of doing that.
Yes, and because those establishments generally aren't bothersome to their neighbors, and we haven't received any complaints from the neighbors of those establishments. But if we did receive complaints from neighbors and the, in the liquor license, the way the license was structured said that if the council receives complaints, they may deny based on those complaints. I think that would become problematic for the council.
Isn't that what it is, though?
I don't know exactly how the law on liquor licenses is written, but I guess the fact that we don't know because we haven't gotten complaints.
Well, I think it kind of goes to why I think this is important as more of a deterrent. So if people know, if you're a short-term rental operator and you know that your license to operate, your permit to conduct your business, is potentially in jeopardy based on that, just in the same way the operator of a bar or restaurant that has a liquor license knows that if they have complaints or violations, their ability to continue to serve beer and wine might be disrupted, that they take a much more vested interest in ensuring that that doesn't happen. And so I'm not saying that there won't be instances of people appealing and complaining, but I think the intent and purpose is, if it was to operate in the same manner in which the liquor license permits do, then, in my view, you just kind of prove the point that as a known and active deterrent, it serves to help to curtail the behavior.
We, go ahead, Chris, or I'm sorry, I can't say that.
Chris, you can jump in.
Respectful, I think Jamie did a great job teeing this off. He succinctly summarized, this is really a big issue we need to address, but I do think Ben has the better argument. I think Jamie, your argument actually proved the opposite point. Using the liquor license analogy, liquor licenses are not issued for residential neighborhoods. They're in specific neighborhoods where they're compatible with the surrounding area. And you also can't dispense liquor if you don't have employees on the premises. So if we use the liquor analogy, it actually would tell us that we shouldn't be permitting these in the neighborhoods. Imagine how many complaints we would have if you could issue liquor licenses to anyone's house anywhere in town, and people are allowed to just have people they don't know come to their house and just drink alcohol and like leave some money on the table when they're done. It would be a disaster. But yet, that is in effect what we're doing with these short-term rental ordinances. So keep that in mind. The liquor license analogy, for me, weighs heavily in favor of we should not be permitting these whatsoever.
Yeah, I'd agree with that to some extent. You know, restaurants and bars are accepted socially, and we don't get complaints on restaurants and bars regularly. And short-term rentals are a new thing that aren't as accepted, and we're getting a lot of complaints on them. So it's not a perfect analogy. We could try it and see how it goes, but I foresee it being litigious and time-consuming.
I just think that we haven't had anything in place that effectively says to an operator, "Your ability to continue to operate will be in jeopardy if you do not, you know, adhere to a certain set of standards and operate without complaint." And if I were an operator and I knew that that was what was on the line, I would act, I think, act in a much more, a manner of much more active oversight to ensure that my ability to continue to operate was preserved. And that if I, if there was activity that jeopardized that, I would be much more serious about putting an end to that activity than what we have now, which is, there is absolutely nothing that we can really do. And I understand all the problems that both you and Chief Fenton enumerated around, you know, community policing policies, and why should we be treating people that are in a short-term rental any differently than they're in any other residence in town? And we wouldn't roll up on a regular residence. And first of all, you don't even know if it's a short-term rental property or not necessarily. Like, there's a whole host of things that we've covered ad nauseam about why trying to, you know, cite people for that activity sort of in real time is very difficult all around. I think that building in a mechanism that hopefully proactively deters that is a pretty critical element to being able to have a successful regulated program here. And without it, I think a lot of this starts to fall apart.
Can I respond directly to that?
It looks like Penny maybe wanted to respond directly. So I just want to give her a chance if that's the case.
I'll let Chris go first, then I'll go.
So Jamie, your logic is spot-on, and it's in part what swayed me onto your point of view with respect to hosted rentals. But I think it falls apart because as much as someone wants, when you're dealing with unhosed, because as much as someone wants to protect their ability to do the rentals and everything, if you're not there, if you're not present on-site, there's no way to predict what this random person, you have no relationship to, that you may have done the best you could screening them on the internet from Kalamazoo, wherever they may be coming from. You have no idea who this person is, and there's no way to predict what the impact will be. And because of that, as much as you might want to protect your permit, you might want to protect your ability to operate, it's not something that you'll be able to effectively do if you're not present on the property.
So that's A, the risk they're assuming, and B, you know, a factor that they may weigh to say, "You know what, this isn't something that I want to assume that risk, and so I'm not going to do it." So.
Penny?
I'm in agreement with Jamie because I think if somebody chooses to enter into running a business, they need to know that they're going to be held accountable to a certain standard. I run a business, I have to meet a certain amount of standards, even when I'm not there. And I'm a phone call away, and whoever is a primary resident and unhoseded, they should be a phone call away, or any of the unhoseded ones should be a phone call away. And if something happens, and I think we have to see how this works before we say it's not workable. And we can always come back to the table.
Jamie?
The other thing I was just going to add is, I mean, I feel strongly about it, that I think, you know, I would suggest that the council, if necessary, be the decisioning body like we are with liquor licenses, so that, you know, we're asking these people, you know, operating this business activity to be accountable. If this is what we want to hold the standard of operation accountable to, then, you know, I think we, it's within reason that we should be the ones to assume whatever, you know, avalanche or not, might come our way in terms of the number of instances where we might have to decision on something. Maybe it will be more like liquor licenses where they're relatively few and far between, and it's a fairly perfunctory thing. But, you know, I'm fine with the council assuming that burden. It's that important to me to have included in this, that, you know, I don't, if the concern is we shouldn't pass it off to the ZBA, we shouldn't pass it off to, you know, certain staff members, I have no concern with us taking that on and writing that into the ordinance.
Jamie, I think that's a really good idea because I agree this is a pretty important aspect of the ordinance. And I think you're right, that just having it in there gives people an incentive to comply. So quick show of hands from everyone who is in support of Section F sub-8. Okay, so Penny, Jamie, Caitlin, sorry, I froze there for a minute but then caught up, and Jeremy. Good, okay, and Valerie. And what about the second point Jamie made where the council takes on? And just to clarify, Jamie, you mean if Ben opts to deny based on this, the review comes to us?
Right, so, or, well, I don't know, maybe we need to think it through a little bit more in practice. But because as it stands today, again, if we just stick with the liquor license thing, those aren't coming to us for appeal, those are just coming to us for approval. So, yeah, I mean, I would think that this would have to be only for those that are denied, right? If somebody's, we're not going to be, the council's not going to be the one approving all permits. If there's no concern, there's no issue, and it gets approved for renewal, then the council wouldn't have any, so I guess it would just be for appealing denials.
Maureen, give us your wise counsel.
Oh, you're going to be a little disappointed. I think what you want to do is have any appeal of Ben's decision go to the council. Because honestly, if he issues a permit, people are going to want to appeal that. If he denies a permit, people are going to want to deny that. And at least if you want to be the receiving body, you probably need to be the appeal body.
So how does that work, like, who has standing to appeal the issuance?
Well, typically, any, I mean, I'll let Ben step in, but I know when I've worked with the town attorney, it's like anybody who can prove any interest, and it's not that hard, even if you're not living nearby but you're a resident, that you can prove you've got some standing. And the idea would be that, you know, someone applies for a permit, Ben says, "You've got complaints," I say, "No." So the STR permit holder could appeal to the council. Or someone applies for a permit and he grants it, and the neighbors or whomever say, "Well, we're gonna, we don't think he should have given him that permit. We've had problems." They want to appeal this decision that way as well.
Jeremy?
So it sounds to me like the needle we're trying to thread here is, we don't want to have the council have to approve every short-term rental permit every year. And so we want to distinguish between properties where we have had no, which is essentially what we do with liquor licenses, right? Even if there's no complaints, we still vote on them. We want to distinguish between properties where there are some issues and properties where there are no issues, and enable Ben to issue the permits that are where there are no documented issues of any kind, and then have some mechanism for the council to review the other permits. Whether that, and that could either be requesting that the code enforcement officer forward to the council any permits for properties that have documented violations of the good neighbor policy, and the council just votes on it de novo, or we make the council be the appellate body to Ben's original determination. I could see the merits of going either way. But I think that's the question before us.
Valerie?
I think as we're talking about this, that we need to add in the enforcement of what Mr. Howard was talking about earlier. If someone says that they are a primary owner of the home and they aren't, how are we enforcing that also? True, it's a felony, but what's the process? Is that also going to be something that Ben says, "This has happened," and then we send it to the district attorney? Or does it come before the council? I think we need to talk about enforcement of that also and make that a part of this discussion.
I mean, I think in that case, if the police had sufficient evidence to charge, they could just charge, and then it would go to the district attorney for prosecution, right? I don't know, Ben, Maureen, Valerie, if anyone wants to respond to that.
Well, we don't have anything written in as a procedure, though. So Ben might, Ben, does he know that that's his position, that he's supposed to contact the police? The police are supposed to contact? The police are supposed to contact the VA or complaints filed, charges are filed. I think we need to put in there some sort of process.
Right. I don't know what that process would look like. I would talk to the, I guess, the tax assessor and the chief of police and let them know my concern and that's as far as I would take it.
Maureen, I was going to ask, do we need something in the ordinance to address this?
I mean, we can, we can add as much to the ordinance as you want to add. But if some, if Ben issues a permit based on someone asserting that they have, they are a primary resident in Cape Elizabeth, he's going to check with the assessor. The assessor is going to check the homestead exemption. The homestead exemption, remember, is a separate standalone statute that has its own enforcement provisions. And I think we want to try to let the assessor do his thing and not muddle the code officer and the assessor's responsibilities. So if someone asserts there they have a homestead rights and the assessor determines that that's not correct, we should let the assessor figure that out on his own with the state statute that's already in place. And then Ben would handle the short-term rental permit. If he's issued a permit and then, you know, just correct me if I'm wrong, but if you've issued a permit based on someone's assertion that their primary residence is in Cape Elizabeth and he's notified by the code, the assessor that that is no longer the case or that never was the case, I would assume at that point Ben would revoke the short-term rental permit. And if they continue to operate a short-term rental without their permit, the ordinance has provisions in it that talk about how to go after that. And, you know, frankly, that's, that's why we have the third-party enforcement. And that's probably going to be more of a Superior Court and town attorney type of enforcement.
Matt, did you have something to add to that?
Yeah, just as far as verification of ownership, there, there's a litmus test that also comes. It's not as easy as just signing, signing the homestead exemption. There are other ways to also, that the assessor does to verify if it's their primary residence, they'll look at, you know, the person certifies that this is their, they're filing as a main resident. And then they're also saying on their driver's license, this is their home address. The legal resident, you know, if they're fishing or a hunter, that it's that address on their license there. And they also pay motor vehicle excise tax in the, in the town, identifying that as their address. And then finally, that they're a registered voter and they're identifying that as their address as well. So there are a number of ways that, you know, you go in and then and verify their residency status. And if they go through all those hoops to do that so they can short-term rental, it's going to be awfully tough to catch them. But most folks are legitimate when they do identify that. And then over time, you do have to qualify your data and just verify that a person may have, you know, they may, they may have it in error and you just remove that. And then you could address that as well. So that can be just part of the process of verifying their residency status there, which is the normal process of things.
Okay, so it sounds like that is taken care of and more just a matter of education, making sure that everyone in the process knows their role. But we don't need to add to the ordinance. Is that accurate? Just head nods. Yeah, Maureen and Matt, okay. So Jamie, did you want to get back to the discussion of review?
Yeah, I do. I, a question to clarify, the current ordinance does not allow for an appeals opportunity. Is that correct? No, that's not correct or no, you can't?
Maureen, you can go ahead.
Ben, please correct me, but any decision that Ben makes under the zoning ordinance, it can be taken to the zoning board as administrative appeal. So people always have an opportunity to appeal. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we would have to specifically exempt this process from the existing process for an appeal to come to the town council?
Well, there's, this, that's section eight, talks about the appeal going, I mean, that it says Ben makes the decision and then it goes to the zoning board. If you make a determination that you want it to go to the council, then I'll just revise that subsection eight.
So since this, current ordinance went into effect in 2012, had there been any administrative appeals of Ben's decision to issue a permit to any short-term rental operator? So I'm guessing that people haven't known that that's an opportunity available to them. But, and maybe there will suddenly be a flood of appeals. But over the course of eight years, people have had a chance to appeal those decisions and haven't. I don't know if other councils are concerned about an overwhelming volume of appeals. But eight years of, of not, they're not being won.
Maureen and Ben?
I was, I was just going to say you're, you know, there has, there's not, in the current ordinance, there's not a lot of basis for appeal for the issuance of a permit. But adding that provision about the good neighbor guidelines, you're, you're just adding a lot of meat to the bone for appeal.
Right, but on the most basic basis, somebody who has had, you know, legitimate complaints about activity could say, well, I just don't think that this person should be able to have a permit and I'm going to fight about it. And nobody's pursued that avenue to date. It, it's just interesting to me that there might not be much basis for them to do that. But it, it strikes me as interesting that the number of, you know, legitimate concerns that we've received, that nobody has pursued that avenue.
Maureen?
Well, again, you know, when, when someone makes, submits a permit to Ben, nobody knows that's happening. There's no noticing requirement. And I please don't think that now we need to put in a noticing requirement. But, so they, they don't, they don't realize there's a short-term rental until something goes wrong. And then.
We've had a lot of people though, Maureen, that have done more. I don't mean to interrupt you, but we've had a lot of people that, as you've seen, have done more than their fair share of research and homework on this, that could easily determine when somebody's permit was issued, which is public information, and know that it would be up for renewal. And if they were, if they were that hacked off about it, you know, intercede into the process at that point. And nobody's done that.
Well, that's because the standards for getting a permit are not the problem with what they have with the short-term rental. I mean, the existing.
But even if it was to just make life difficult for the operator. I mean, you know, and to, and to try and gum up the works.
I think people are relying on the existing provisions in the ordinance that talk about complaints, substantiated complaints. And that's, that's the process they've been trying to use to challenge these permits in the end. But if you look at the standards, I mean, as long as you've got septic system and you're not proposing more people sleeping over and you're meeting the building code requirements, there's not a lot for neighbors to chew on about. I mean, there have been complaints about the people that are having the turnover one more than every seven days, but they're going through the substantiated complaint process.
Right, and that's kind of what we told them to do when they initially came to the council and they asked, what should we do if there are issues? And we said, make complaints. Chris, did you want to jump in on that?
I want to go back, make a, just a comment on the good neighbor conduct components as to what constitutes disruptive behavior. Are you, you want to, can I touch on that? Or did you want to continue to debate these other issues?
I don't, I don't think we need to debate the other issues, but I kind of just wanted to move in the direction of the review versus.
So I just wanted to point out that it says disruptive outdoor behavior may include, but is not limited to smoking, swearing, lewd gestures or conduct, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So as a big fan of George Carlin, I just wanted to highlight the fact that we are saying that we're potentially, people may end up having their permits revoked based on the content of their speech, it sounds like. We're saying if you swear, you may lose your permit. So we're basically, one could argue, we might be putting in something that could be construed as an anti-swearing punishment. Also, we're restricting smoking on private property. So I just wanted to highlight, we're doing this. Same with lewd gestures or content. Again, that's content, I wonder whether that's content-based restrictions that we're engaging in. I also think that this is, this is going to be a hornet's nest, this section. And I think, I'm very curious, I'm not going to be around. You guys are going to deal with this, not me. I'm very curious to see how many unhoseded short-term rentals survive more than two years with this thing in place. But who knows? I could be totally wrong and there will be no complaints.
Sorry, just trying to manage two documents here. I see your point. It looks like Valerie, did you have a response to that?
I just want to say that it's getting really late and we have a lot of people here that are here regarding the diversity committee. We also have people here regarding the solar, our energy committee. And it sounds like we may need to have more discussion around this good neighbor policy that Chris just brought up. What are your thoughts, Madam Chair?
Yeah, I noticed it's definitely getting late and we have another big item on the workshop agenda, which is a little more time sensitive. So I would be fine with scheduling another workshop on the short-term rentals. But I also feel like we could be pretty close to consensus. So maybe let's just take a quick poll on who, just first of all, who's, who's in favor of changing the process of review as opposed to leaving it as it's proposed in? Okay, so this will be entering into that discussion about changing the review process and changing that good neighbor conduct paragraph, either one of those. Who feels like we need to discuss that more and change it? So Valerie, Caitlin, Jeremy, Chris? Okay. Generally, show of hands on who thinks we should maybe continue this discussion another evening? Or plow through? Plow through, show of hands? Matt?
I'm not voting, Madam Chair. I had a question or something that the council may want to consider. Is this, perhaps, you, you have the finish line in many ways in sight. Perhaps it could be an opportunity to refer this to the planning board and get some of their opinion points on the good neighbor policy as well to come back for the council to consider. And then you can have that as additional therapy, if you will, when you do, when you go forward to discuss it again. Because it will come back to the council with their recommendations and review. And then you can have that as additional, you know, some, some things as you are getting late, it's difficult to identify all those issues. But you've really circled many of the, many of the parts on the game board, so to speak, to, to keep moving forward. So that might be an additional strategy for the council to consider.
I hear that and I think though, at the last meeting, I can't remember who had said it, but there was sort of a sense that we should send to the planning board what we intend to be the ordinance. So I, I think that might be a good idea for these two remaining issues. Jeremy?
Yeah, with respect, I feel like the, the issues on the daily rental caps was a more substantive issue than, than this. I, I think we can pose this as a question to the planning board around the process. And in particular, as it's a process that the planning board is involved with as regards to other land use regulations, I would value their input on this question. I think this ordinance is inside the five-yard line in terms of where I'd like to see it. And I'm okay to, I'm more than glad to forward it to the planning board and just highlight this is a question where we would value their, their input.
Does anyone disagree with sending what we have to the planning board and closing out with this discussion? Raise hand now if you disagree. Okay, I, I know, Chris. All right, so we will close this discussion and move on to the next one, which is the idea committee. Okay. So when we last met, we were sort of reworking the charge for the idea committee. And I know we do, as Valerie mentioned, have a number of attendees who are here on this specific issue. So I'd like to open the floor for any public comment. Please use the raise hand feature on Zoom. Please do identify yourself by name and address and try to limit your comments to about three minutes per person. Paul, go ahead. Matt will unmute and then you, you have to unmute yourself.
Unmuted, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. So I will propose another name for the committee and my reasoning behind that. Preface my remark by, it's, my remarks aren't, aren't long. I'll preface my, my remark by noting a belief that it matters how we publicly identify what we are as a beacon for what we do. So first, the committee's objective at their root, objectives at their root are not designed to manifest on the level of ideas. Ideas are immaterial. Actions exist on the ground affecting material reality. So the first impression of idea with two As is misleading in terms of focus and objective, I'd argue. Second, in part because this is to be a civic body, I believe the name ought to be located in a municipal milieu. Therefore, I propose the name Civil Rights Committee to remedy those concerns. This proposed name has been part of recent Cape community conversation and has community support. I'll give extra emphasis to this next point as it was raised by another community member at another meeting and appeared to us to be swiftly dismissed as inconsequential. Civil Rights Committee would avoid confusion and conflation with the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. More so, it avoids any perception of co-optation or misappropriation of that or, of that act's name, which is an optics matter so easily avoided. Idea with one A, dealing with social marginalization, education and political presence, should have its own name unconfused with idea with two As, dealing with marginalization, education and political presence. The name Civil Rights Committee doesn't require learning what it is by expanding an acronym, is readily understandable to the public and the press, locates its fundamental purpose and is inspirationally associated with empowerment and the arc of justice and appropriately identifies it in the national history you are making tonight on the local level. Thank you for your serious and thoughtful consideration of this proposal.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public with a comment on this item? Audra?
Thank you for taking my call. Audra Gore, 215 Two Lights Road. I agree with what Paul just shared, though I do like the words that we chose to as far as the inclusion, diversity, equity, anti-racism and awareness. So I hope that those could be reincorporated. The other thing in the latest revision that I was able to download removed is the part about explore community outreach to engage the community and receive input on racism and inclusivity. And I feel like this is a really key point. And I would love for that to be included back in. That was letter H in the previous document, which isn't in the latest revision. But I hope that this moves forward tonight and that a yes vote can be had. And thank you.
Thank you. Jen?
Thank you again for taking your time.
Thank you again for taking your time to talk this through with us. Seven Brentwood Road, Cape Elizabeth, Jen McBay. And I also wanted to echo the same sentiment as Paul, as creating this as a civil rights committee. And having heard what Audra just said too, I think a lot of those key components need to be considered in this. And I think a lot of that will happen as we develop the ad hoc committee. But I think our primary goal is to make sure that this does not get pushed out any further than tonight because we really need to start moving forward with this. So again, thank you for tabling the short-term rentals to get to us. We appreciate it.
Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for your patience. I know it was a long discussion we had ahead of this one. Anyone else from the public with a comment on this item?
Hi, I just wanted to say Paul Sideman, 21 Oakview Drive. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. I don't see any other hand. Oh, yes, John.
Hey, guys, John, can you hear me okay? John Sessery, nine Old Fort Road. I just want to thank you guys again for having this meeting and for doing all such great work. And hi, Matt, how are you? I just want to also say that I agree with Paul and Audra and Jennifer. I like the civil rights name way better than the idea. Not that the idea didn't have its merits, but I think we should be more direct. And I also agree with Audra on point H that we kind of crossed over. I think community outreach is an important part that we should somehow figure out how to word and reinclude. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. All right. So just to note, we do have 18 attendees at this point. I think we had a high of 26 or 27 previously. Just so we all know that. All right, so I don't see any other hands raised in the attendees. So I do see Valerie D. wanting to kick off the discussion and then Penny. So go ahead, Valerie.
Well, first of all, I'd just like to thank everyone in attendance for hanging in there with us and for participating in this. It's really important that you're a part of this and your voices are heard. I, I really like Paul's idea about the Civil Rights Committee. I think the name is great. We were just looking for some sort of a name for it. But I think this is very clear and straightforward. As to H, that was just accidentally left out. I went through this to revise it so that we wouldn't have as much to revise tonight. And maybe Matt, can you, would that be okay? Chair Adams, if Matt puts the document up on the computer?
Yeah, definitely.
So we can add H back in. It would be number eight. It was just accidentally left out during the cut and paste, that's all.
And you can see that, okay? I just want to confirm if you're getting a good visual. Okay, thank you, sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, number one, I'm so glad Paul brought up civil rights. That's what I was going to suggest last week, a name for this ad hoc committee and what will ideally become an ongoing committee. I also wanted to say, and I'm not sure I'm going to articulate this very well, but I'll count on my pal Chris for always being able to interpret what I say. I truly believe that this ad hoc committee has a near-term set of actions which then transform into a, a long-term set of strategies and I would say actions as well. I truly believe that one of the first charges of this committee is to assess what can be done immediately and to identify the purpose and the direction for a permanent committee and to bring that to the council as soon as feasible. I think that a, an end date that was in here of December 31st, 2021, I think the ad hoc committee should actually have a shorter timeframe and order that a permanent committee get put in place as soon as possible. I'm not saying that we, we not take action on some things that we know are important out of the chute. But I truly believe this ad hoc committee can put a, a plan together that says, here's what a permanent committee will do over the next 12 to 24 to 36 months. I believe that a permanent committee is something that needs to be part of Cape Elizabeth from now to eternity. It's something that I think every community should have had many years ago and we wouldn't find ourselves in this place. So I think in order that we demonstrate the commitment to the work around civil rights and anti-racism and truly moving Cape Elizabeth to the forefront in action, that we charge the committee with identifying what the permanent committee will be doing with what are some near-term actions that need to be done within the next two months, four months? And what the charge and direction of the permanent civil rights committee will be for Cape Elizabeth.
Penny, do you think, are you saying you think that the ad hoc committee should have a term of two to four months? Or we should put in like a report?
No, I really think, I truly believe that what we're doing here is saying the ad hoc committee is going to be put in place because we truly see the importance of this issue in our community and our state and in our country. And that it's a way to get some things going and direction set because we know that to put a permanent committee in place requires the ordinance committee, et cetera, et cetera. And it needs to go to the council. So I think that process needs to start immediately. And once that permanent committee is in place, the ad hoc committee dissolves.
I think that's a really great point. I've never served on an ad hoc committee and I don't know how easily it is to get the work done to get to that point. So I don't know if there's someone on the council who has an idea of how much time would be enough without taking more time than necessary. Does anyone have a sense of whether two months is appropriate or too short? Jamie?
I agree with all of the sentiment that, number one, it's clear that there's a need for a permanent committee. And number two, we're even expressly including that in the charge for this ad hoc committee. I think as, as we all know, just from, you know, operating as a council and seeing, you know, some of us have been on other committees. It just, it's challenging sometimes to get stuff scheduled. I mean, none of us are doing this full-time. You know, we benefit greatly from the willingness of citizens to, you know, give of their time and talent to staff these committees. We, you know, rely also on, on staff people to be involved. In this case, it's recommended that the manager be involved. So that's somebody that already has significant other demands on his time as well. I think, I think it's just that I know many of us come to the council when we, when we first got elected or first come to sit on a committee. And I know I was surprised, I suspect many of the rest of you were, in terms of the pace at which we move through things. And I know it's a common criticism from the public. Sometimes that, oh, why can't you just do this faster? And the fact of the matter is, is that sometimes even, even as fast as we're able to do something is just not fast enough for people. So I suspect we would need more than two to four months, just on a basis of scheduling. I think based on interest in some of this work, that there are likely to be people who may have a lot of other demands on their time. People that are, you know, parents of young children, so on and so forth. So I think, I think it'll be difficult to get people meeting and, and get all that work done in a super compressed amount of time.
Caitlin?
Yeah, I would rather leave the date as it is and they can always finish their recommendations early. But changing the date would put more pressure on, I would think. Do you get what I mean? Like, we're going to have to have so much time to get the committee in place, so much time to get that first meeting established, which always seems to take forever. And then to a couple of months to get the ball rolling from there. So, I mean, I don't think December 2021 is unreasonable. But like I said, they could be done in July and give us a report in July. We're not going to help it until December. So when they're done their work, they're done their work.
Matt, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I may, the one other item to consider is Zoom meetings in the time of COVID and getting a group organized and as well as trying to be productive is a bit of a challenge. And the extra time might be beneficial, especially as you go through the appointments process and get people on board. And then, yeah, you do have the organized, organizing time. You have the holidays that will run into this at some point as well. So as Counselor Jordan pointed out, you can, Caitlin had pointed out that doesn't mean that you have, you have to wait until then to come forward with your recommendations. If they are found sooner, that's great. But it's, it may be important to have that time, but not, but I think you could, I think you can get organized. But there are some challenges now as far as working with committees that we haven't been experiencing up until, quite frankly, March of 2020. So something to consider.
Penny?
I just, I think what's important to me is that the, because I know the formation of the permanent committee can take a few steps as we look at going to the council, going to the ordinance committee, going to public, all of those things, that that be highlighted as a priority for this group so that we can get that going and get it established and get it as a, an ongoing part of Cape Elizabeth's committee structure. I also know that policy reviews can take, you can get enmeshed in that. And I think there's a, there are some that we want to look at out of, out of the chute. But there are others that go into a plan that the permanent committee may look at because you can't do everything at once. And public awareness is another thing that's critical at, at the onset. So those are the types of things I think about that this ad hoc committee is going to be having almost a dual focus at the onset. And one is near-term, one is long-term. And establishing that long-term vision and direction is key from my perspective. So whether I will, I will agree with my peers, Jamie and Caitlin, and say, yeah, you're probably right because I'm usually overly optimistic. So keep the date there. But I think we need to be vigilant about saying how critically important we feel this is at this point and not let it fall along the wayside and, and lose momentum because it's important.
Valerie and then Chris?
I agree, Penny. But one of the things I want to point out is the people that came to, attended our meeting and the people I've talked to have amazing energy and passion about this. They're not going to let it languish. It's going to happen. They're going to push this through. And I think that once it gets started, they'll have an idea of how quickly they can get this standing committee set up. And if they want to tackle some of the issues or put them all over for the standing committee. I think that we have an amazing group of people that are super passionate about this. And it's, they're going to, they're going to take off. They're going to, they're going to take it and run with it.
Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, so to Penny's point, I think with the way that the purpose and charge is structured, the first draft was really structured in the format that one would find for a permanent committee. And now this is, that, that structure has been transformed into this, into the ad hoc committee format. But the duty section has basically been carried over from the, the permanent committee's structure. And I, I think the issue that Penny is getting at is that the duties are very broad. Because it's a, here is your long-term, what you're going to be doing, as one would see in a permanent committee. But, but the question is, if it's an ad hoc committee, they're supposed to be given like a, here's your task, here's the work product you're supposed to be generating with more specific guidance of, here's what we want from you. We want it in, in the near term. And by virtue of having the broad duties and not prioritizing for them, it opens us up to the possibility that the group may, as much as we would want it to be moving forward, firing all cylinders, it might, because it has such a broad charge, it might end up becoming bogged down and not moving forward. And it stinks because I understand how it was like, oh, we want to get to the meat and potatoes. We want to get to the substantive stuff. But to Penny's point, it is perhaps what the charge should be for the ad hoc committee. And I totally understand that I'm saying, oh, we're just going to make everything take forever. But that's not the intent. It's just government stinks. It's, but it's the best thing we got. It's better than everything else we've tried. Things move slow and there's a reason they move slow. And it's to ensure everyone has an opportunity to have a voice. It's to ensure that everyone is included and given an opportunity to participate. And when you do that with 10,000 people, things move slow. But it perhaps, to Penny's point, would be the charge is, give us the, give us the explicit, like, standing committee. We want the standing committee description laid out with everything it's going to do. And that's your initial charge that we're giving to you. Only once you've accomplished that do you move on to the other stuff. But it could be that everyone would say, no, 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 we want to get into meat and potatoes now. Don't worry about that. But I am concerned that things then get bogged down and nothing is accomplished. And to Paul's point, I, I was scratching my head when I saw the idea thing. I like something about this. But I think, yeah, the Americans with Disabilities Act, I studied that in college. And ah, that's, that's where it was coming from. So I totally am on board with going the other direction for the name.
Valerie, did you have your hand still up or is it a new?
New. I was just going to respond to, to Chris and Penny. I think that this began as a permanent committee. And we started setting it up that way and then thought, oh, it should be an ad hoc because the committee should decide what the name is and what, what they want to do and bring it back to the council instead of the council deciding what they should do. So that's why it's a little confusing. I just sort of copied it all over and added some of that in and thought that tonight in our workshop, we'd talk about the charge and if we want to tweak that so that we get this really streamlined and they're off and running. So I, I agree. Maybe we reduce all of the duties, create it as a charge to set up a committee. Standing committee.
Penny?
I, here's the way I look at it, because I don't want to lose sight of near term immediate action. So an ad hoc committee to assess immediate actions, propose a permanent committee to the council. I mean, that's basically the way I look at it. Because I, I also know that there are many things that can be done by this ad hoc committee that is really creating awareness across the community and at the same time identifying really what a permanent civil rights committee would be in Cape Elizabeth. And then, as they, when they are formed from a permanent perspective, people are going to have already seen action and positive action. I think to get mired too deeply into assessing policies and things like that at this point in time will will get a bit bogged down. And I understand what you said, Valerie, about initially it was thought of as as permanent. But the duties, the the duties that were outlined just kept shouting to me, this is permanent stuff that needs to be done and needs to be done in a, in a planful way, in a prioritized way, and in, and in ongoing way. And that's what a permanent committee does. So I say, assess immediate actions and propose the permanent committee is what I look at as for this group.
Penny, I just wanted to note what you said, and I only got to propose, assess immediate actions and propose.
What did you say? I was muted.
Assess immediate actions and propose, what was the?
And propose a permanent committee to the council, a a permanent. That's all I wrote. That was my little statement to myself as to what I thought the purpose of the committee was.
Yeah. And that makes sense, Valerie, what you said about the starting as a permanent committee now looking at it. Generally, what do, and can you just use the raise hand feature? Because I can't see everyone when I have the screen share up. Just generally, counselors raise hands, who's in support of reducing the duties down to more of an ad hoc style, maybe something along lines of what Penny proposed, maybe a little more. So Chris, Caitlin, Valerie, Jeremy, Penny. Okay. Jamie?
I'm just wondering if there was any thought to go in the other direction and just advancing to a standing committee. It it strikes me as odd that out of the gate, we're already talking about this need for a permanent standing committee. And that being the very first action to take, it seems like just as much time could be spent invested in the work to go through the process to stand up that committee. I don't know.
So I mean,
I'm not clear what what time we're actually saving, I guess, is the point.
My concern would be that we are an all white council. And obviously, you know, all coming from our points of privilege that the committee itself, the standing committee, would be more meaningful if it was created by the community and not us. I don't know what other people think about that, but that's kind of the sense that I'm feeling. Jeremy?
Okay, I just, I'm not sure what you mean by not created by, I mean, we'd still be the ones managing the appointments process, and I'm not, I'm not sure if I follow.
That we, if we give, develop an ad hoc communit- committee to then advise on creating the permanent committee, those ideas about what that permanent committee needs to do and what the issues are and, you know, what what training is needed, that's, that's coming from the community and not from us. So there are obviously things that we are going to be blind to that this committee might be better able to delve into. And, you know, it seems like it would be a richer and frankly, a more anti-racist approach than us sort of saying, top down, this is the committee that needs to happen. There are hands and hands on the side and and hands in the view. So Caitlin had her hand up. And then Penny, and then Valerie, and Jeremy was waving his hand. So I'm gonna go to Caitlin first.
Yay. No, I was gonna say the exact same thing. I think we need to go to the ad hoc committee so that they can develop the the purpose and the meat of what the standing committee is gonna be. Because it shouldn't be our place to be trying to figure that out. It will take even longer, I feel, in the end than let, than doing it this way. It won't do it justice.
I, if I could just jump in, no, I, I, I thought that that's what this represented. So maybe I'm just mistaken and not understanding what stakeholder input has led to this to begin with. So that's, if I'm just misunderstanding that, then, then that's fine. I thought that that's what we were looking at reflected, so maybe not.
You mean stakeholder input to develop this particular charge?
And and what the focus would be and the thing, yeah, so, you know, the, I thought that there had been a sort of cooperative stakeholder process that led to this being the recommendation to begin with. It sounded like a lot of the folks that have a vested interest in this had had been involved in a participatory way, so.
Did Jeremy has his hand up, but I want to go to either you or Valerie. Valerie, this?
Go ahead, Jeremy, and then I, and then.
So many hands.
I was just gonna say, I, so I, I think there was a good faith effort, and I think we did a good job of reaching out to people and getting some community input on this charge. But at the same time, I think also before we commit to, I mean, obviously, we could change the charge for a permanent committee. But before we commit to a permanent committee, I think there's a mix of things that that committee could do, some of which are on this list, you know, policy review, sort of tasks to recommend policies to the council. But there may also be other things that that folks would like to bring forward in a more standing role, such as some type of oversight, you know, ombudsman type role or something like that. And I, and I think that the the permanent committee charge would benefit from some additional discussion from folks who are more involved in and have more knowledge and understanding about the issues around racism than than I do.
Okay, so Penny had her hand up, and then Valerie.
All I wanted to do is, I was kind of wanted to respond to Jamie. My, my thought is, I mean, I, I agree with what Valerie Adams has said and Caitlin that this ad hoc committee is, is about input to forming the permanent. I also feel that this ad hoc committee, and I will keep saying it, there are near term actions that can be taken. And so it's this team, this group, this committee has two charges. And, and then we will know what does this committee need to look like and what is its ongoing set of duties and responsibilities. But I agree with them that it's not up to us at this point in time to define what that is. I really want to hear from the people on the ground what they see.
Valerie?
Yes, in in response to to Jamie, we did have a lot of people that participated. However, there's a lot of people that couldn't make it and weren't able to to participate. And then we we got a lot of input and put this together. But then it became a workshop like it is now, where it was us discussing it, putting it to, putting in all the words. And it wasn't a back and forth, which an ad hoc committee would have with each other. They'd have more of a back and forth and a discussion around it. So I really think that Penny's idea is right on with getting this commit, this ad hoc committee together. They can decide what the name is. They can just get everything set up and have the two charges. That really makes sense. And I think that it'll happen quickly. And and I also understand, Jamie, why take the other step when we can just set up a committee right now? But I think it'll be more more real to the community and to the people of community if they're the ones creating it rather than us establishing it. So, and more. So I'd like to propose that we do that. Set up the two charges as Penny suggested and change the name to Civil Rights Committee and allow the ad hoc committee to decide the name going forward for the standing committee.
Okay. So let's start with the committee name for the ad hoc committee. Just sort of knock off some of these smaller items and then see if we can get through this. So quick show of hands, everyone who likes the Civil Rights Committee name. Penny?
That are human rights.
That are human rights? Is that what you said? Okay, so we'll just start with civil rights. So it looks like everyone likes Civil Rights Committee. Okay. So we will change it to Civil Rights Committee. And then Valerie had accidentally eliminated a point, but it sounds like maybe we're moving away from that. So we'll come back to that. In terms of the charge for the ad hoc committee, Penny had proposed some language, assess immediate actions and propose a permanent committee to the council. I do think we need to be, we need to beef it up a little bit more, just to be a little more, more specific. But quick show of hands, everyone sort of in favor of that as a starting point? Generally, everybody. Okay. I also wanted to note, before we get too far away from it, that we did get a lot of emails. And one of the emails had suggested a change to the purpose to add after systemic racism. So it's the second line of the committee purpose, contribute to systemic and structural racism, which is a small change, but seemed kind of important. So getting some nods, is that okay with everyone if we add in structural? Yes, okay. All right. So what we would then have, moving down to the duties of committee, we would have the Civil Rights Committee shall have the following duties. Do we want to leave in number one as part of the ad hoc committee? Show of hands for leaving in number one of the the draft that Valerie had sent around Penny.
Underneath, where'd you go? I'm running out of battery power. Hold on, I gotta plug in. These long meetings aren't good.
Also, while she's doing that, that's 10 out of six. Do we have to take a vote for a workshop meeting to go past 10 o'clock?
When you get to the meeting, a portion of the is when you'll have to suspend council rules to to go forward with actually having the council meeting. Madam Chair, and I did make the change that you asked for under, as you can see on the screen, about systemic and structural racism. So I have that edited inserted.
Okay. Oh, I see. Yeah. Do you mind also, while you have that document up, just changing the name of the committee so we have that? For the thought, well, Penny's.
I don't know if it's gonna work. My iPad is all heated up here. Okay.
Penny, I think you're muted. Did you have a?
Yeah. Okay, here I am. I don't know how much detail you want to go through here for number one, but I'm not a this is wordsmithy, and you guys are gonna get mad at me. Interface people, people don't interface. I learned that a long time ago. But we can identify and pursue opportunities for collaboration with another committee. So with the school committee. So I say, identify and pursue. I got, I got a bunch of wordsmithy kind of things that I'm more than willing to kind of send along to somebody, but that was mine on the first one.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we might be sort of moving in the direction of taking out a lot of these. If you have some.
I would think that, I would think that this ad hoc committee needs to identify and pursue ways collaboration, because that's gonna become part of the ongoing, I would assume. So they're gonna touch on that.
Yeah. Okay, so identify and pursue opportunities for collaboration. Jamie?
I'm just, I've just been confused based on what Penny, the direction you were writing before. Are not two and three basically it, and then everything else that follows will be the recommendation for the standing committee?
Right. So that's what I was saying is that, based on that, do we want to leave in number one, which is, which could go either way, that could be something for the ad hoc or be more of a?
It's gonna fall into the definition of the ongoing committee as one of its responsibilities. Correct?
Is it also something that we, because we're now paring down what the ad hoc committee does so that it's essentially establishing the committee?
Okay, I see what you're saying. Yes.
Want to keep that one in for an ad hoc committee.
My poor iPad, it's overheating.
Yeah, my computer is doing the same. So just general show of hands, do we want to leave in item number one as part of the ad hoc committee? Zoom, Zoom hands, please. Jamie? Jeremy?
Sorry, my hand was still raised. I, I, my, I, I thought we were just going to two and three. So if I, maybe flip it around the other way to say, if anyone wants to keep anything other than two and three, voice in on what you want to keep.
Yeah, that sounds good, because I think that is the direction we're heading in. So if anyone has any comment on keeping in anything? So if anyone has any comment on keeping in anything other than two and three, which we can wordsmith if we need to, hand up. Okay, Jeremy, go ahead.
I just want to say, I think there is some value in keeping one in because the school board is going through a similar process at the same time. And there may be opportunities for those two groups as they're developing the ideas for a permanent committee to be talking with each other and exploring how that moves forward collaboratively in the future. If it comes out, I'm fine with that, I think you can say it's implicit. But since these two processes are moving on, moving along in parallel, I think it makes some sense to reference them. But I could go anywhere.
Do you think maybe it makes some sense to reference that? Well. I was going to say to incorporate it into number two, but I think if we do that, then anyone could argue that we could incorporate anything into that, as a, and including this, including that. So, and anybody agree with Jeremy that we want to keep one or incorporate it in some way? No, okay, so I think we're just down to two and three. Does everyone agree with the language of two and three? If someone does not agree with the language, please go ahead and propose alternative language. Chris?
It sounds like we, it sounds like we all agree that we don't want a recommendation on establishment of a standing committee. It sounds like we all agree that we want an establishment, a standing committee. So I think what we're really after, and I don't have the proposed language, is that they recommend a charge for a standing committee.
Okay, so Penny has suggested assess immediate actions and propose a permanent committee to the council. So what if we say number two, assess immediate actions and propose a permanent committee to the council, including the naming of the standing committee and the charge, period. And we take out the first pair, the first sentence of two.
Madam Chair, could I get you to just fill in after I have in there, I'm sorry.
Propose a permanent committee to the council, including the naming of the committee and the charge.
Thank you so much.
Chris?
I still think it's too verbose. I would cut the assess immediate actions and make it straightforward with, and I don't want them to propose the and I don't mean to but I, it's the, I want you to hand us a ready to go charge that adheres to, that based on your kind of assessment and review, and I guess that's what the assess immediate actions part is. But I want you to, you committee, to go figure out what you believe the proper charge should be and have it ready for boots on the ground for us to review it. And hopefully say, yeah, this looks great with almost no changes and then just adopt it. So what I want, I want is that we went and got input from stakeholders. Here's the actual charge document for you guys to just review and say, that looks good, and then pass.
Do you have a suggestion on language for that?
Give me a second.
Okay.
Short answer is no.
And so while, while we think about that, I think it may make sense to look at number three. And we also had a suggestion that we should take out potential from that, which I agree with. And just have racism. But do we need that? Is that included in the charge? And is that something we now envision this committee doing? Or do we just envision this committee bringing us the charge which will include that? Hopefully, I would think that would be at the top of the list. Penny?
I think that a couple of things. Number one. Yes, this is part of the charge because we have the immediate actions that need to be taken. And they'll be relative to racism and inequality. I think it can just say in our, in Cape Elizabeth, and you can for government municipal departments, et cetera, because there's some really obvious things that can be put out there. The other thing that comes in to these two statements is that actively researching and identifying work in other communities in our region and across the country. That's gonna be important as we identify and we define this committee. We want to draw from what's going on around us in Maine and in other states as well. So I don't know if we assume that people are going to infer that? Or do we need to explicitly state it that we're assuming you're going to do this?
I think if there's consensus that that's what we want them to do, then we need to explicitly state it.
I do too, I do too, exactly, because we aren't going to define it in a void.
Chris, did you have a response to that, or were you?
No, I had proposed language.
For, for two?
Yeah.
Okay. Thoughts on Penny's? Thought on three? Who is in support of keeping in, or I guess, does anyone else think that we need to change three in some way? No? Okay, so.
Except for taking out potential, correct?
Except for taking out potential, which okay, so it sounds like people are comfortable leaving three as is. For two, Chris, do you want to take stab at language?
I'm gonna say this out loud, so no need to try to capture any of it. I'm gonna say it once through, and if people like this direction, then we would change the words, but don't start typing until after it. So instead of duties of committee at the beginning, changing it to instead committee charge? And then, instead of the idea committee shall have the following duties, it would be the committee is specifically charged with the following. And then the first would be to prepare for town council consideration within the first, to prepare, so to prepare within the first X months from the first meeting of the committee for town council consideration, a permanent committee charge. So that, that would be, be an attempt to capture it and then also be like, we want you guys to do this right now. And even setting it as like three months, that might seem really, really fast, but that's to get it into our hands so that we, because we're so slow that we can get going, and then they can be working on three while we're working on what's currently two. And if no one likes that idea, then back to the drawing board, but otherwise I can reiterate all that. You're on mute.
Thank you. I like that idea. Show of hands in favor of Chris's proposal. Penny, Jeremy? Sorry, I can't see everyone at once, so Valerie can't, okay. Okay, so do you want to reiterate that and Matt can type it in?
Yep, so the duties of committee would instead be committee charge. And that's to mirror the committee purpose structure from the heading above. It would be the committee, or so Civil Rights Committee, is specifically charged with the following. And this is more the, the ad hoc, like we're giving you this precise task. And then whichever bullets we have would begin with the word two, so number two, skipping one for the time being, just number two would become to prepare, or just a brand new one, to prepare for town council, to prepare within X months from the meeting, from the first meeting of the committee or the Civil Rights Committee, from the first meeting of the Civil Rights Committee, so we shouldn't say which committee we're talking about. To prepare within X months from the first meeting of the Civil Rights Committee. A draft standing committee charge for town council consideration. And then number three, even though we said not change it, you would stick two in front of advise. Since it's now charged with the following, to advise the town council.
Okay. Alright, so it sounded like item one was coming out, is that, does anyone disagree? With that? Okay, so we'll take item one out. Two becomes one, and then, and then we take out everything else below that, that, and anyone jump in if it seems like this was not the consensus, but this is what I'm getting. I would, I would say prepare within what? Six, six months and three months, Jeremy says three months. Is three months reasonable, three months, prepare within three months of the first meeting? Okay. And then in terms of the funding and staff resources needed section, given that this is an ad hoc committee, I, I don't know anything about this sort of thing, so Valerie, you you drafted this and probably know a whole lot more, is that still appropriate under the circumstances?
No, I don't believe it is, because basically what they're doing is putting together a standing committee. This money, we were thinking that they would possibly look at training, do some other things. So Matt, what are your thoughts on, will they need? Will they need money or funds to proceed? I don't think so.
If I, if I may, Madam Chair, if you're looking at a three month window, it may be wise to, I think you could forego this at this point in time, but as they get organized, if there is the need for funding to advance advance the charge, we could always come back. I do have, as you may recall from our budget, we do have funding this year put aside for special, special committees. Or we could come back and say, we are going to need some funding and I could come back to the council to ask for that at that point in time.
Penny?
I'm going to say that part of the near term actions might be some training out of the shoot for some of our I'd say departments or even the council or because what I, I'm gonna continue to stress is that it's forming a committee and near term actions. It's, there are things that I think we still need to can work on. Not that it's a lot, a lot of money, but Matt, if we say that we can say to this ad hoc committee that if they identify a near term action that requires funding, that you have the discretion of X amount of dollars? Or do you have to come to the council if we don't allocate any dollars here?
It kind of, kind of two different avenues. I know it kind of sounds funny, but on one side I've got staff development where I may, you know, that's a whole separate entity. I think I could make it work by coming back to the council to say, I need X amount of dollars to accomplish that. At this point, to just hang a number is, is it's speculative, where if I had something, you know, similar to the, the training that we've been availing ourselves of at, through the MMA, with some of the workshops that they've had there lately. As I know, like that's, that's come out of different training that we've had towards the end of the year. But if there was something on a larger scale, I would want to come back to the council to, you know, quite honestly, because it's it's important to the council as well to know that this is the direction we're going with staff as well as providing the opportunity that the council may want to do. So if I had that, if there's a, a lack of better term or fiscal note attached that said, it's gonna be X amount of dollars to do it, I'd want to come and have your blessing there. And I'd have my details lined up, so you'd be able to also identify why you'd want to spend it.
Okay. Chris, yes?
Penny had her hand up first, oh, no, it's down, okay. Different topic, but to go up to, if, Matt, if you could go to the top paragraph?
Yes, sir, I'll be right there.
I would suggest that we take the sentence, "One town councilor shall serve as a non-voting executive official member of the committee and up to two student representatives from Cape Elizabeth High School and or Cape Elizabeth School shall serve as non-voting members to be elected or appointed by the school." First off, I would take that and I would stick it right after the first sentence, and I would precede it with the phrase, "In addition", to clarify that those individuals are not part of the seven that are appointed, because otherwise it leaves ambiguity as to what we're intending there. And then on top of that, if you look at the two non-voting student representatives to the school board, there's this very long drawn out detailed process for their appointment, where they do like, there's like a candidate tonight at the school, and then the school votes, and they have to go through this interview process, and it's a very prolonged process. That seemed like it would be applicable here, but at the same time, that's like a year long process that occurs, which doesn't seem applicable here. So instead of having them elected or appointed by the school, I would just have the appointments committee appoint them. I totally see the rationale behind elected or appointed by the school, but because this is, and that would make sense for the permanent one and have them follow a process akin to what these, happens for the school board liaisons. But for this, I would just have the appointments committee interview and appoint.
Madam Chair, may I ask Councilor Straw a question as a, as a follow up on that? Possibly for the whole council, quite frankly. Do you think possibly the student representatives may be more appropriate for the standing committee versus the ad hoc committee then at this point? Looking at school year organizational capacity, not knowing when the school may happen, things along those lines. And then that may be a larger, long-term plan that might work?
Jeremy?
Sorry. I, I can see the logic of that. I also am recognizing that we have a lot of young people who've been very active in this space over the last few months. And providing an opportunity for some of them who may not yet be 18 years of old to have some input into the structure of this permanent committee, I think would be frankly beneficial.
Okay, hands in favor of keeping in the student representative? Jeremy, Valerie, Jamie, Caitlin is your hand up, or? Yes, okay, so we'll keep them in.
Thank you.
I think that's a good point about the process, is that can we just have the appointments committee handle that? All, everyone in favor of just having the appointments committee do that? All, everyone in favor of just having the appointments committee do that? Okay, looks like pretty much everyone. Okay.
For that second sentence also, the suggestion was in addition before the word one. Just to help clarify that this is separate from the seven.
Right, if Counselor Straw, if you'd indulge me.
Right there.
Okay, thank you.
So in addition, comma.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. And so where did we land on the, the last part, that funding part? In terms of the ad hoc committee? I think we got sidetracked as that discussion was sort of wrapping up. So.
Sorry.
Yes, Chris?
Did we all just agree that, that the appointment was going to be from the regular appointments committee for the kid or?
Yes.
Students? Yep, so I think we have to change that language. Shall serve as non-voting members. I think we could end it. And up to two student representatives from Cape Elizabeth High School. Up to two student representatives appointed by the, oh, yeah, there you go.
Yeah. Okay. So jumping back down to the end there. What do we typically do for an ad hoc committee? Do we, do we typically have a section like that for an ad hoc committee? Just.
Times funding is identified as, as being part of their, part of their construction. And you, you may be able to make it as simple as saying that oh, shooter, it's getting late. I was just trying to think, if you say it as the town manager shall advise the council as to the financial needs of the committee and and return with a recommended funding mechanism or funding balance for the committee to as needed.
Like type that in so we can see it and then?
Try that.
I think that's, that's probably what's going to work. I want to make sure, you know, they have what they need.
Would that work? Something along those lines, so that I could come back, at least you've got a, you'd have a ceiling, but then you would know that I would come back once they might have identified it. Similar like the Harbors Committee, I think had, I think they started off with $10,000 to get their, their task done. And it's, it's a guesstimate at this point, quite frankly.
Chris, yes?
I'd strike everything before the first comma, but otherwise, yes. So I just say, "The town manager will advise the council on financial needs and request funds as the committee performs its tasks." Not to exceed 10,000.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that sounds great. Quick show of hands, everyone who is in favor of this? Alright, looks like, okay, we are all in favor of that. Okay. And then we're going to take out that next part. And do we need to, do we leave in the summary? I don't know what standard for.
I think we can, I think you can delete that, Madam Chair.
Valerie, thank you for all of your hard work revising this document. I'm sorry we ripped it to pieces. Yes, go ahead.
Oh, no, that was exactly what was intended. This is great. But I just wanted to mention that I had just put in here that Matt would, where is it? Matt would staff it or provide staff for the committee? Do we want to decide? Matt, do you want to decide that now, or do we leave it that you'll decide who's going to be the, the staff person?
If I, if I could, I'd like to come back. I'm still working that through, but I yeah, if I can come back with advice on that, it's either going to be myself, I think that's going to be my role, quite frankly.
Well, also in the purpose, we have to clean, clean that up.
You mean clean it up because they're now, the charges now less? I think the first word actually still works, like that first sentence still works because in drafting the charge for the standing committee, they will need to do that. But obviously, the second part doesn't necessarily work. And the third sentence also doesn't necessarily work, so. I think it may just be the first sentence. Does anyone disagree that we may just be down to the first sentence for purpose? No one disagrees? Okay. That looks good. So the one thing that I just want to touch on before we leave this document is, on the second one, the second point, it's a little bit unclear to me what we're actually asking. And I want to make sure it's clear to the committee. So what, other than creating the, the standing committee, what are we asking them to do? One thing that I wanted them to do is sort of like an immediate thing is to sort of advise the town council on immediate immediate training or education or, you know, essentially, I'd like them to provide us with a reading list or just some, some basic first steps that we should take before we even get into looking at the committee. But I don't know if that's what other counselors were envisioning by that number two, and I do think it's a little ambiguous, so. Valerie, what were you envisioning when you drafted that?
Well, this was basically drafted by the, the group. We put this all together. So it's really part of the bigger picture. It seems very broad to me. I think that your idea of taking action steps and maybe it's advising the town council on actions the council can take immediately and training that can take, that can happen immediately. Some sort of actions that we can take on right away before the standing committee is put into place.
So maybe advise the town council on, or what Penny's language was, assess, assess immediate actions.
Yeah.
Maybe assess immediate actions and advise the town council on. I don't know.
Assess and.
Assess and advise?
Advise. Assess on immediate actions and advise the town council on, on those issues in order to take action.
Okay. Does anyone dislike revised sub two or have any other suggestions? No? Okay. Any other work that any counselor thinks needs to be done on this document? Before we move on.
Capitalize town council into.
Oh, yeah, yeah, cap, and sub.
Or just consistency between one and two. Whichever is the right one.
It looks like town council elsewhere is lowercase as his town manager, so I think that works. Okay, I think we are done. Great. Alright, so that is the end of our workshop meeting. We now have our regular meeting. Just pulling up the agenda. So how does the, how does the vote go? Do we vote now or after we start the meeting?
You'll need to, to vote to, to suspend council rules to take up the actions after, after 10 o'clock, Madam Chair. So I think to start the meeting, you'll have to go that route.
Okay, so I, I would like to propose just a, a two minute break if we are going to proceed. So we'll do the vote first and then that. So all in favor of suspending council rules to take up all items on the agenda for our July 20th meeting, special meeting? Just show of hands.
We need a roll call.
Oh, right, we need a roll call. Sorry, forgot about that.
Do you have a motion in a second?
I move that we suspend the rules to take up the items on our special meeting tonight.
Second.
Counselor Deveraux?
Yes.
Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Garvin?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan? Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman Adams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So just quick two minute break and then we'll convene the meeting and plow right through. Okay, so we are all back. We already convened this meeting earlier before breaking to take up the workshop. And do we need to redo? Well, we need to do the roll call for this one?
Deborah, while, while you were out earlier, would be into that, I did do a full roll call and we did do the Pledge of Allegiance at the, at the beginning.
So we're good? Okay. Great. So there are 15 attendees left with us this evening. Thank you for your devotion. Does anyone have an item not on this evening's agenda that they would like to raise? This is your opportunity. Seeing no one? Okay. Item number 102-2020, recommendation from the Energy Committee relating to a landfill solar project. Anyone here wishing to comment on this particular item? Please go ahead and raise your hand if so. Right, seeing no one? So we do have some information in the materials this evening. And we are now finally looking to authorize the manager to enter into negotiations with Encore Renewable Energy for the installation of a solar power installation at the Cape Elizabeth Recycling Center. Former landfill site, which is recommended by the Energy Committee. And I first want to thank the Energy Committee for their work and getting this together because it's been a long time coming and we are very much appreciative of all of your hard work. Alright, so is there a motion to authorize the manager to enter into negotiations? Jeremy, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Chris? Discussion on this particular item? Penny?
I just wanted to know if we're going to address the questions that Bill Downs put forward. I, I think we should at least acknowledge them and address them. Specifically about not any supporting documents. I, I know that they have had their minutes and their research because I think we have seen that before. Actually, I shouldn't say I think, I know. And question two about no usage and cost history for the town, I thought we had seen, we had seen that. So I'm hoping we can address those questions.
Yeah.
I don't want them to follow us through this whole process.
Yeah, I just I'm seeing that email. And I also Jamie, did you have a response to that or something else?
I was gonna bring up the same point because I think we have all the information. I guess I'm just questioning whether or not it's not been posted or so.
Chris?
Yeah, I think it's it's not part of tonight's packet, but over the last two, three years. So the deep the usage analysis that was that began with the ad hoc committee. It was like 2016. I could have the year wrong, but we've been analyzing that for a while. It's a good point that, hey, have you actually do what your usage was? But this is something that we it's not part of tonight's packet, but something that has been looked at with respect to where's the details of the plan. We already had the various bids come in previously, and then we said, hey, guys, go get more for the and prepare for the final negotiation. And that's how we ended up at this point. So other stuff has been in prior meetings. Tonight's packet doesn't include those prior meetings things that we've seen. My recollection.
Yeah, and they did put together a very the the ad hoc committee put together a very comprehensive document. And I think a lot of this information was in that document. But I would agree that we've seen a lot of this stuff. Jeremy?
And also, just for the record, I note that Bill asked a question about the capacity factor and why the Energy Committee bids showed such high such a high range. I just note that the recommended bid proposal from the Energy Committee is within that or well, not within, but it's closer to that range of 14 and a half to 60 and a half percent for for the IS of New England. Solar study. It's and is on the lowest. It's actually the lowest of of any of the bids that were submitted.
Valerie?
I could not get either of the links to work to the Energy Committee draft minutes or the meeting materials. But with that, my concern is that the Energy Committee put together a shortlist with four bids. Isn't the town manager supposed to review those bids with with an attorney? Is that something that? It just seems like this is a 20 year contract and we have four bids. Isn't the town manager reviewing all four of them before taking up the recommendation? And I appreciate the recommendation and all the work they've done. But they aren't elected or hired by the town. So I would think that isn't it? Maybe I don't know the process, but I feel like it's my due diligence to ask the question, at least since we are elected and this is a 20 year contract.
Do you have a response to that?
A couple of different areas, if I may, Madam Chair. First, we do have Sam Milton and Sam Lipman and a couple of other members from the Energy Committee who are here tonight as attendees and have stuck it out to this point. The council received back in our workshop on June 1st an analysis of all the supplied materials that they had received up till that point and their ranking of the different proposed vendors to do that as well as they had a significantly or substantial RFP that was sent out to all of them that qualified a lot of that within their responses to help them to get to that point. So they have they have reviewed and went back after the council workshop in June to look back and have a conversation with all with the top three, and then they added on the fourth next bidder, reviewed all their proposals as well, and then and then came back and asked them for their last best offer. And that's why they came forward with their their recommendation. That's that's generally been the practice with many of the committees in the past. Energy Committee has followed the same pattern as, say, last last week, the Four Williams Advisory Committee or Four Williams Park Committee, sorry, old to have it. Four Hills Park Committee came forward their recommendation regarding the master plan update. Prior to that, the Recycling Committee had come forward with their recommendation that they had for that for that project. And I'm trying to think others that had taken place in the past for recommendations to the council. At this point, it's to enter into negotiations with the committee, sorry, with the with the entity that they recommended. So ultimately, it comes down to any any steps from this point forward also come back to the council to approve as well what the final details would be. But it may be a good opportunity at this point to ask Mr. Milton to also provide anything that I I may have just missed, as well as some of the discussions from the committee, if that would be helpful.
Mr. Milton? You are permitted to talk.
Good evening. How are you, everybody? Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, councilors and town staff. Yes, as Chair of the Energy Committee, I can attest that we've spent the last few months very diligently going through the various bids we've received. I'm creating a fairly complicated and complex scoring matrix. Not that it's complicated, but it's 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 comprehensive. I'm kind of looking at the various bids across all of the different different metrics. And yeah, now, as as a town manager, Serge just said, you've come gone through all of those and the cream of the crop has risen to the top. And and that's the the company that we recommend that town interesting donations and do. And we're here to support that process as much as as much as we can. And, you know, are willing and able to answer any questions about the process, about the information, technical matters, and about the contract structure. And yeah, as Council Straw has mentioned, this is a this has been a project that the town has been eyeing for for years now. So I'm proud to finally shepherd this through one of these, you know, final stages of work and actually get the facility developed. Thank you.
Additionally, if I may, Madam Chair, on the on the on the town council packets link for this evening's meeting, there was the Energy Committee meeting distribution slides from July 16, 2020, that was provided there. And that did show the our annual usage at 2,151,027 kilowatt hours in 2019. So that that information was was there as well. And that showed, you know, even with the annual production from the, you know, from the selected vendor, you know, they'll they'll help us meet, but we will not exceed or that doesn't even exceed the the annual usage that we do have. So that information was also available. I don't know if Mr. Downs didn't see that or I can't.
Yeah, it looks like the link in the agenda didn't work, but the document was in the supporting documents on the website and that link works. So I don't know if he's in attendance. I don't. It doesn't look like it, but I'm happy to email him and just follow up on that. And it looks like Richard Parker, who's also on the committee, is has a hand up. So I'd like to give him an opportunity to speak.
And Richard, your microphone should be live, but you just would need to unmute it.
Yes, I just wanted to. Matt just mentioned about what the capacity was, and I had to add to that that, you know, we're we're we would only support, we'd only want to supply 80% of our usage because you get if you exceed your annual usage, you don't get reimbursed for it. So you need to stay below your annual usage. The other thing I'd like to mention when he talks about the number of quotes and options, when we put the request for bid out, we had seven companies reply. In a total that we had 31 different options between the seven country companies that we that we had to evaluate. And those were with discussions with the town council and discussion with the workshop, those are narrowed down to four companies. And with the instructions, we relative to whether or not the companies, the town council wanted to keep the recs or not, we narrowed it down to the to the final nine options that you see in the in the information that we sent tonight. And you you notice that they it's close and the final recommendation from the council or from the committee was based on not only the qualitative stuff we did, but also the quantitative stuff we did, but also the more subjective things. You know, we see that the ratings between Hep and Marisco, Encore and NextRid are in many ways very close, but it was our the committee's strong Encore was the one that was best to to meet the overall objectives of the town. And, you know, they've got a vested interest in in Maine, and they're very serious about expanding their market. So I think they're going to be a good vendor. The other thing I'd mentioned is that the committee has some expertise on negotiating these types of commit contracts. And so if in the process of negotiating the final contract, if you want to utilize some of those resources, those are more than you're more than welcome. They'll be readily available to you.
Thank you, Richard. Thanks for sticking it out and helping out this evening. Okay. Does anyone else have any questions for the members of the committee who are here? And Chris?
It wasn't a question. I was just gonna know. Yeah, so I think you get as you touched on, it was the June workshop that we got a pretty detailed presentation from the Energy Committee on all of this. And they described for us the various RFPs. That was what I was recalling with us reviewing the RFPs because I don't think we looked at the details of this particular ones. But with respect to the materials tonight, I just wanted to highlight the fact that the encore one, so my understanding is we're looking at the encore one, not the encore three committee. Correct me if I'm wrong about that. But the estimate was a net present value of savings to the town over the next 20 years right now of estimate was about $900,000. So this is a a proposal that our estimates, which hopefully are roughly accurate, is this is going to save the taxpayers $900,000 in debt value as of net present value.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, and Valerie, I definitely appreciate you bringing up that point. I think you're right. It is. It is our duty as public officials to ask the question. So if we are all satisfied, did you have something else to add?
I just wanted to ask if Matt did receive all four bids and there he he had you do have them.
Yeah, I've been able to see all the documents and I've been meeting with often every other Tuesday or so with with the chairman and the and another representative from the committee as well. They've been trying to since the last council workshop, we've been trying to keep up to speed on that on a week to week basis. So, yeah, they've done. They've done an incredible job and the bandwidth in that committee is nothing short of amazing. So they've done a great job. And the last part is, I will, it says authorize the manager to enter into negotiations, but I will be hiring legal services to who are familiar, speak the language to assist through that process to when we come back to council to have it teed up properly.
Go ahead.
And I just want to finish up by thanking the committee for all of the work they've done. I know that it's been a long drawn out process, and we really appreciate all of the work, all the presentations you've given us and getting us to this point. Thank you so much. And thank you for staying less than 11 o'clock at night. This, thank you.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion, we'll take a vote on the motion on the table. You're muted, Deb.
Sorry, it's not good enough. Council Deveraux?
Yes.
Council Gabrielson?
Yes.
Council Garvin?
Yes.
Council Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Council Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Council Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Adams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Next item, item 103-2020. Short term rental ordinance. Okay, after our extensive workshopping of the ordinance, do I have a motion to forward the proposed amendments as as amended this evening? To the zoning or to the zoning?
To the planning board.
Proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance relating to short term rentals to the planning board for review.
So moved.
Caitlin? Okay, any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, I I missed the the public comment on this item before we delve into it. And thank you, Jamie, for reminding me. Any any public comment? On the item? No. Doesn't look like it. Okay, so any any further discussion from the council on this item? No, all right, all in favor?
Council Deveraux?
Yes.
Council Gabrielson?
Yes.
Council Garvin?
Yes.
Council Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Council Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Council Straw?
No.
Chairman Adams?
No.
Motion carries five ye, two nay.
Thank you. All right, item dash item 104-2020, the Appointments Committee recommendation relating to what is now the Civil Rights Committee and Ad Hoc Committee. Any further public comment on this item before? Vote. Right. I'm frozen. Can you still hear me? Okay. All right. So looking for a motion to approve the recommendation of the Appointments Committee as revised this evening to create an ad hoc Civil Rights Committee. Reporting back to the council within three months. Valerie, are you? Is that your motion?
Yes, so moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Penny. All right, discussion on this item? All in favor?
Council Deveraux?
Yes.
Council Gabrielson?
Yes.
Council Garvin?
Yes.
Council Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Council Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Council Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Adams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 105-2020, confirmation of the appointment of a Public Works Director. Thank you, Matt, for your email, all the information. Huge thanks to Bob Malley for all of his work. And also, thank you to Jay Reynolds for putting himself out there and and being ready to take on the mantle of leadership after Bob, which is definitely big shoes to fill. But I'm sure that it sounds like we picked a great candidate. So is there any public comment on this agenda item? Does not look like it. All right, looking for a motion to confirm the recommendation of the town manager. Jamie, are you making a motion?
Was, but more second, whatever you need.
Okay, so Jamie's motion to confirm the recommendation of the hiring of Jay Reynolds as Director of Public Works effective August 10, 2020. Is there a second? Jeremy? And any discussion? Chris?
Just say, since it looks like Mr. Reynolds is online, thank you for putting up with the late hour of the meeting. And hopefully, this is the last time in a long time. We're up to 11:10.
Until tax season.
Yeah.
All right, sorry, budget season. Yeah, Matt.
Sorry, apologize for that. If I may, just briefly, I just wanted to say this is an exceptional candidate, and we are overjoyed to have Jay come on board with us. Jeremy Gabrielson, Council Gabrielson was in on the Hiring Committee, went through two different rounds. Jay shone through spectacularly both sides. And to get him to join our team caliber of what he brings is going to be just an outstanding asset for the team. And we are so happy to have him come on board. So August 10 is what we're looking at for a beginning date and August 10th is what we're looking at for a beginning date and just couldn't be happier. Sadly, sad to lose Bob, but at the same time, extremely happy for him and graduating to his next chapter. But we are also equally now very happy to have Jay come on board.
Yes, and thank you, Jay, for sticking it out to this 11:11. Okay, so all in favor?
Counselor Deveraux? Yes. Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Garvin?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Adams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 106-2020, relocation of the War Veterans Monument. Anyone from the public wishing to comment on this particular item? Does not appear so. Okay, so it's recommended by the planning board approval to install a flagpole and relocate the War Veterans Monument to the Village Green. So we're looking for a motion to authorize the relocation of the War Veterans Monument to the green.
So moved.
Valerie, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Penny, discussion on the items? Jeremy?
All right, I don't mean to open up a can of worms at this hour of night, but I'm just curious what the legal status of the land sitting under the mon, under the monument is going to be. Will the town be granted an easement and, or will the, will the green be granted and fee to the town?
If I may, Madam Chair, yes, the town, when they, when they finally get that to the point that it's meets the site plan approvals, you should anticipate seeing at some point in the future deeding it to the town as part of the approval. So they'll be giving that land to the town with all the improvements. So ultimately, it will be a town asset and under our ownership.
Thank you. I'm comfortable voting for that then.
And you will, you will see on next month's agenda as well. A thank you to some local citizens who donated additional funds to upgrade significantly the, the flagpole that shall be going there as well. So there's been, we have some very generous people who wanted to help out and specifically that's what they'll be doing. So preview of coming attractions for that as well.
Thanks, Matt. Jamie, go ahead.
I just had a question. Is there any updated sort of design plan reflective of what, now that we're a little further into the actual work? I, I, I remember early on looking at, you know, some of the things that we reviewed and I, I just didn't know if there was anything more current reflective of, of what the work is. And, and sort of related to that, is there anything else that's planned to be cited there? You know, I know, like, for example, the Joni statue is adjacent to the War Memorial, but I, I don't know if there are plans to move that. Or is, is this intended to become sort of the new location for a lot of that stuff or?
Looking at it to be the new location for, for the majority of the, like for, for Memorial Day. I think the plan, and we have power run there now as well. So they'll be able to have amplification to host, you know, the ceremonies after Memorial Day parade with the War Memorial there and we can dress that up. We are looking at Dr. Jacobson's office, which is, they're doing a lot of the site work back there. The other remaining lots have, are still available and on the market. But nothing's come forward, at least to, to fill those. But I know watching it take shape over the past, you know, really the past four weeks and to seeing the grasses growing in, the plantings are all going into place. You know, the site plan is, you know, we've looked at that a couple of different times. They, they pretty much have carried that true to form as to what was approved. So it's a significant improvement right there and just waiting to see the, you know, the rest of it, rest of the lots get populated eventually. But Dr. Jacobson's office should be doing their construction in the near term.
I, I meant more just the green and the elements on the, like, I remember what we looked at was, you know, landscape design rendering. That I, I was talking about more about the specific elements for the park, but.
Sure. No, that's, that was what was originally brought to the council, right down to the exact trees that have been planted. And the, the only wrinkle that we did have was the drainage that was brought back to the council when we found that we had drainage going out to the site. But everything else there has, has fallen true to form as to what was, what was brought to council originally.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor?
Counselor Deveraux? Yes. Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Garvin?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Adams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Deb. Okay, so there are just a few attendees left. So if anyone has a would like to raise any topic not on the agenda this evening, this is your opportunity. Paul?
Hi, I just wanted to mention, Chris, I hope you're in Fiji because it's only 3:15 in the afternoon there. I wanted to give a shout out to Penny and Valerie D. Thanks, Caitlin, Jeremy, Jamie, Matt, Deborah and Valerie A. How you managed to be frozen for even a moment on a night like tonight, I just don't know, but it's pretty amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for sticking with us till 11:17.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, if I just said one, one last thing. I hope, like heck, not to bother you until August 10th. If that provides any solace for the hard work that the council did this evening, I thank you for all of your efforts. It's, it was a heavy lift tonight and you guys did awesome. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, everyone, for sticking it out and we're looking for a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Jeremy. All in favor?
Counselor Deveraux? Yes. Counselor Gabrielson?
Yes.
Counselor Garvin?
Yes.
Counselor Caitlin Jordan?
Yes.
Counselor Penelope Jordan?
I'm not quite sure yet. I've been having too much fun. Okay, yes.
Counselor Straw?
Yes.
Chairman Adams?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Night, everyone.
You all take care. Sleep well.